Okay. Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:03?
Three.
Calling to order, our work and briefing session for Duncanville City Council, regular city council meeting on Tuesday, September 21st, the official first day of autumn. Or fall. Or it's hot outside. Welcome to Texas. Just a little bit of housekeeping. There are some special guests that have been invited to city council tonight, and I asked them to be here at 7:00, so I can present them with some things. It's in our agenda. So, we can do everything possible if we can get out of here at 6:55, be in there at 7:00, let's go at 7:00, whatever we can get accomplished. By 6:55 on our briefing session, we will resume later, okay? So, we'll do everything we can to work that. Missing Mr. Contreras, any idea?
I just saw him in his truck. He needs to know. You know, I don't do it well.
Okay.
Get that back.
Okay, alright. Okay, well, we have a quorum. I just wanted to make sure that we understood that. Okay, so, working with that, first thing that we have on our work session and briefing session, Ms. Farah Benavides, if you would go over the consent items, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today on our consent, our item number A. 4A is our consideration of our minutes, our minutes from May 18th and June 1st. Our second, item B, is an item, it's consider a health certificate revocation hearing. A city health inspector is revoking the health certificate for a 14 news at 718 West Cleveland Road due to use seven violations of city health ordinance. This notice and citation were issued in person to the owner on 9/14/2021. The health certificate holder may request a hearing within 10 days of receipt of the notice to appeal to the health inspector's decision. The purpose of the resolution is to appoint Presiding Municipal Judge Rizzo as the Health Officer for Health Certificate Revocation. Resolution allows one of the municipal associate judges to serve as a hearing officer if he is not available. The term of appointment is 12 months.
Question. So, how do we grade this, on scores or, when you talk to health inspection, when you're going to those establishments?
I will ask Mr. Ramey.
You're asking?
How do you grade the restaurants? Is it on scores or?
Yes, sir. They do get a score and it's posted on the website. We just don't post it in a window. In this particular case, we respond outside of our normal inspection process to particular complaints and temporary closures, which is what we've done in the past, but now we were like, nope, too many, and so we're closing, we're revoking their health certificate.
Any reason why we wouldn't post it on the window?
It's not required under your ordinance. Some ordinances do require it, we do not.
Yeah, great. Let me look at that. The city manager, can you bring, can you look at that and see if anyone else has added that to the ordinance?
Yes.
I love us to look at that and see if it's something we can post, because for our citizens, you want to know before you go into the establishment where it is, like, have a look at what is the grade, what is the number.
Work with our city attorney. Alright, item, item C, 4C, FY2020 mosquito contract. The city of Duncanville contracts with the Dallas County for the mosquito ground control program. This program includes monitoring four traps spread across the city and spraying in affected zones in event of a positive identification of West Niles or St. Louis. C, cost of spraying is about $185 an hour, $19,055 is allocated in the city's general funds budget for the program. Item 4D, consideration of the resolution authorizing the third renewal of the interlocal agreement entered into by the city of Duncanville and Dallas County Parkland Health and Hospital System to provide biotech EMS system service in the amount of $53,657.49. This is a third year renewal for a two-year contract for subscription for medical control and medical direction required by law.
One more question or another. You mentioned, the one you mentioned on before, you said it was in the budget?
Yes.
So, as you go down to the rest of them, would you be continuing putting, if it's something in the budget or out of the budget? I noticed, I noticed the one you said in the budget, the other one we didn't say anything at all.
Okay.
So, we're just kind of being consistent with saying, it's within the budget that will help us.
Okay. Let's see, so that's D, yes, and this amount, and item D is also an annual contract, and it is included in our budget projections. Okay, item E, it's the interlocal agreement with the city of, mine are a little off. Yours say E, yes, which one is E on yours? Okay, so, my numbers are a little bit off, so let me go back to this, because, interlocal agreement with the city of Dallas for Public Safety P-25 radio system project to provide the following to the city of Duncanville first responders. We've briefed you on that several times.
We're on F then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is off.
Okay, we'll go back to E.
So, let's do, F for us is FY20 Dallas County ILA?
No.
Nope, what is it?
Z for us.
I, okay, so let me, okay.
First, we're fine.
So, on here, we're going to look on this one, because the agenda's off. Interlocal agreement with the city of Dallas for Public Safety P-25 radios. This is one we've talked about, fire, police fire, emergency management and cost sharing of consoles for the South Central. Note not to exceed 70,000 of subscription fees for 194 total radios or consoles in the first fiscal year. Will be prorated due to not accessing until at least mid-FY22. Also, this is included in the budget. A is P-25 radio infrastructure, B is programming, and C is support. And my last item.
E is an echo for, for what's on our agenda.
Okay, interlocal agreement with Dallas County for Highway Accident Investigation Services not to exceed 59,000. Dallas County Sheriff's Office is contracted to work all accidents occurring on I-20 and US Highway 67, highway proper, not service roads. Dallas County Sheriff's Office worked 224 accidents in calendar year 2020, an increase of 20% from calendar year 2019. This enables our police department personnel to have more presence within our city and answer calls for service in a timely and efficient fashion. The PD personnel do initially respond to injured and safety divert traffic until enough deputies arrive to secure the scene.
Quick question on that. Chief, when Dallas County Sheriff's Office do arrive on scene, and our briefing package says that once the sheriff's office arrives on scene, and they take control of the accident scene itself, and then our people depart, both fire and not fire?
Well, it depends.
But, that's why I guess the question is, do they say to our people, you can go now, or do our people make an independent unilateral decision saying, we see the situation is under control, sheriff's office has it, we're now going back on to it in Duncanville? How does that operate?
Well, we just, we just have a good communication with them. We've been working with them for years, and our officers know a lot of their deputies that would respond, and even if we don't, we make sure that they're in a good place and they've got what they need to make sure that it's secure, we've got, we've safely diverted traffic. Our EMS folks are there taking care of any injured if that's the case, and, you know, they kind of give us a nod, they have it, and.
So, it's a mutual decision, saying we're ready, we can go back, and the sheriff's office has control.
Yes.
Does, I guess, it's because of I-20 being so vernacular in terms of where it is, do we ever respond along with Dallas police, along with Dallas County sheriffs, and then so we've got three law enforcement agencies on scene?
That's certainly possible. You know, 911 calls might bounce off different towers and geolocations and what have you, and, you know, at Cedar Ridge, we do butt Dallas at that point.
Right.
And even on the eastern side with Cochran Hill, we do, and it all converges because Dallas County has countywide jurisdiction. And, but, and we could get the call as well, so we're all potentially arriving there, and we just work it out.
Okay, alright. Just wanted to get there. And chief, in terms of fire, they don't leave until everything is under control.
We'll continue to block for Dallas County, depending on the situation. If we can, we'll get them off the highway. That's one of the most dangerous places we can operate as, out on the highway, so we'll protect them just like we protect our own people.
Very good. Okay, thank you, just curious question. Okay. It kind of ties into the P-25.
Yes.
That we've got fire, multiple fire departments possible, we've got EMS out there, we possibly can have three law enforcement agencies on scene, depending on the location, and that's why P-25 is even more important to us in terms of being able to communicate.
Absolutely.
Even bigger area than that, statewide.
And Mayor, one of the items that fire, we're talking about as we start to do this is, as we have older vehicles, because we don't want our new, very expensive equipment out there, is looking at how we can rotate some of the older vehicles out for those blockage. So, we'll talk some more about that in time.
Very good, okay. Thank you. Okay, moving off of item number one for our work session and briefing session, going to item number two. This is a discussion on the city of Duncanville trash and recycling survey. Mr. Ramey, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, we're talking about the proposed solid waste collection survey, and we, tonight we just wanted to get council's feedback on that. So, what should be in your council packets is a PDF booklet regarding your proposed survey. We put it, it was in the staff report, hopefully you had a chance to look at it, and we have a hard copy with you. It sort of doesn't print out right, because again, it's sort of an online form. So, again, back in 17 August, we did a briefing session where we talked about Republic's current performance measures, as well as some initial discussion about implementing trash carts in lieu of sending out the bags. And during that meeting, council requested a survey, talking about getting feedback on the performance, as well as feedback on carts, which is what brings us here tonight, which is to show you the proposed survey questions, our proposed marketing strategy, and get your feedback. So, I didn't want to belabor in the PowerPoint every survey question, I know you all had a chance to look at them, so I just wanted to sort of summarize the highlights again. Question one, was just to ask them where they live by subdivision, and then that should also help by, again, by district, they usually saw the map. The way the data comes back to us is a bunch of little dots, and so we'll go from there. Question two through four is just asking the survey taker about their satisfaction with the service they're getting with Republic as our solid waste collection contractor. Questions five through nine ask a survey about their current usage, how many bags they put out, how often do they put out brush, those kinds of things. 10 and 11 talk about garbage carts and that service, and then there's a box that's just sort of an open field where they can talk about anything that they want to talk about. Regarding the marketing plan, we were planning, subject to your input tonight, doing what we were calling a soft rollout of the survey during the 5 October National Night Out, and in that case, depending on their capabilities, we'd either be able to present them with a QR code that they could use, like their smartphone during National Night Out, or we would provide them with these hard copies, and they could fill them out and turn them in. And then, we were going to have the official survey period, November through 8 December, tied to the November billing cycle, and the associated champion newsletter, that's as an insert into that bill. And again, we would, you know, need some final thumbs up from council prior to 4 October in order to have, you know, we don't want to have the survey questions that you don't, you know, we want to make sure that what we present at National Night Out and go out with the QR codes and the flyers is what, you know, again, council based your intent. We would advertise with the LED sign, we again would send out the email newsletter that the PIO puts out, again, social media, and posts on Facebook, Twitter, et cetera, again, that the PIO manages, the website, and then we would have flyers with the QR code at the city facilities, and then our goal is to have, present to, in this format again, the survey results in January. And so, we're just asking at this time for council's feedback on the survey questions, and your feedback on our proposed strategy for marketing the survey to the public.
Yeah, Mr. McNabb. If it's, if it's going out, Mr. Ramey, is there going to be a way that we'll be able to determine whether somebody's duplicating on the survey?
If it is on, well, because I found this out with the Survey Monkey, I, when you put in your email address, like I put in one as a test for one of Alex's previous iterations, and then I couldn't go back in there again, he had to do some stuff for me. So, if you're doing it online, you can technically fill out a Survey Monkey for every email address you may have. But, assuming that people have very limited, you know, one email address that they would use, it would not prohibit somebody that went to like National Night Out and maybe filled out a hard copy one, from turning around in November and doing it again. We wouldn't really have no way of doing the surveys, you know, if we want the hard copies. Now, if that's a concern, and we worry that it might skew the data too far in one direction or the other, then what we could just do is post a QR code, and if you have a smartphone at National Night Out, you answer it. If you go, have us go to the library, and just go to the link in one of the public computers if you don't have one at your house, and we just say this is exclusively smartphone, you know, email enabled, we can do that, but we did want to have some opportunity and minimum for folks who don't really, maybe not really use emails, or, you know, I don't know how many people that is.
Of what?
So, anyway, so if, but again, if council's fine with, you know, so the direction I would ask is, do you want it just to be QR code online only, or do you want to continue with our, you know, having a hard copy option if so desired?
Well, can we go back to your previous slide, before you get an answer to that? Looking at what you've got here, where did I read it? That council approves the questions, but council approving the questions is subsequent to the soft rollout at National Night Out, which means to me that there's a possibility that questions could be changed between the soft rollout on October 5th and, or was it?
So, so what we would do is, again, what we would put in the November is.
Okay, that's October 4th. So, you're asking us to approve the questions prior, I'm sorry, okay.
If you want them, definitely at National Night Out, we would make, we would say that, yes, we.
I had it backwards.
Draft, you did a great job, and we like those questions, go forward and do great things.
Shut up.
Then we're done, and we'll add something.
Greg, I got it, I screwed up. We're good, okay. So, and in answer maybe to Mr. McNabb's question, when you do any kind of a public survey like this, there's a normal inculcated margin of error around 2% to 3% anyway, no matter what you do. So, maybe in the data tabulation, that 2% to 3% can just be a kickout, and we see what's left, or maybe not even worry about it, I'm not real sure, depending on the number. You know, statistically, a population responding to a survey like this, if it fits a statistical Q, then we're going to be okay and not even worry about a 2% to 3% margin of error. But, I guess, we'll just see how many we get in terms of the total. One other question, has this been coordinated with Republic?
In terms of?
Have they seen what you're proposing as the survey?
We talked, we've talked about it, they haven't seen the handout.
Is, is what you've talked about essentially what's in it? I hear, it's like.
I, I've said, we were going to say.
Have we given them the courtesy of knowing what the public is going to be asking?
Yes, I, we've talked about, in concept, we've said, we're going to ask where they live, we're going to ask how they, what they feel about, basically, I briefed them on this.
Okay, and courtesy and fairness to Republic, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we have some talking going on, yeah. Mr. Contreras. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vera Cruz, you had your hand up, and then Mr. Vera, Mr. Contreras.
So, I have two questions. One is, will it be in Spanish as well, one, and then two, are we partnering with this, is it, should we partner with the school district to get on their maybe website to reform back to ours, find out for the survey? So, because there's a lot of folks that have kids that don't pay attention to the city, there's a lot of city folks that don't have kids, and the school district don't pay attention to them either, so.
And there's a lot of people that have kids going to the school that don't live in the city of Duncanville, which is even greater, because they're 34 square miles and we're 11. Talking about skewing data in terms to a margin of error, I think that would push it too much.
If that could say what district they live in, it might.
Right. So, what we've asked is a map, and so they just sort of.
Identify yourself.
Click, roughly what subdivision, and then it would, so it's not a, not really a survey, would you see sort of like, what I was saying, it's like a target, range target, you just see a bunch of holes, or a bunch of dots, and you'll see where all these surveys are coming from.
I have some concern about getting it involved with the, with the school district. Just my knee-jerk reaction to that, Mr. Vera Cruz, I'd prefer not that we keep it within the, within the population, in terms of, even if they don't live in the city of Duncanville, they can still skew the data by going and saying, yeah, I'm in this district, if we push it out to the independent school district with a greater population than what we have here.
It's just a thought.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Contreras.
Did you, you or your staff talk with Republic about any surveys that they had, that other cities have taken, to share information?
I know when we were originally deriving these survey questions, David Dunn, our assistant, affiliate superintendent, did talk to Republic and get some samples from previous stuff. That was sort of a, sort of the seed of, you know, how we wrote our questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Coates.
I just want to make sure it meets what we're trying to, what we're trying to do here, so, I want to talk about, let me back up, talk about surveys. Not sure what our thoughts would be, but in order to get people to participate in surveys, you're going to have some type of incentive to do that. So, an incentive would be, what do you say, take the survey, and we're going to award $100 or $200 or someone to take the survey, and so, because if not, you're going to, we're going to still hear that still, that small number of people that may or may not participate in the survey, and I think our goal is to get them to participate.
So, you want to pay a bounty to do the survey?
What it's, I'm sorry?
You want to pay a bounty to do the survey?
You can call it a bounty, but I wouldn't call it a bounty, but I will, I will tell you that, I will tell you that companies that really are serious about their surveys, really invested in their surveys, are getting people to complete it, up to, my bad, you can check it yourself, up to $1,000 in some cases, who would say, hey, look, we want them to do it. I'm not saying we should do $1,000, we're giving the example of what businesses do who's serious about getting people to participate in surveys, particularly even customer service surveys. So, just a thought, and I wonder if you put any thought into.
Well, I have.
You're talking about money, just throw in incentive.
Well, I, I remember participating in a survey before where it was, it was put in your email address, and it wasn't per person, it was just me, it was, you know, individual Greg, and, but, you put your name, if you, you know, your email address was then put into some kind of lottery. So, of course, I have three emails, so I took three surveys.
Yeah. See.
So.
Shame on you!
Okay, no, I mean, I'm not any different than anybody else, I don't think.
Okay, well, well, just to know, when you're talking about, when you're talking, even, even people like yourself who would do that, and many others, you talked about yourself and, but, we have to figure out a way to kind of get this survey out. The other question though would be, I don't know if 10:5 to 12:08 is enough time in order to get the message out, for people to really take the, to get the survey. People have to have some type of incentive, whether it's, whether it's financial, or whether it's something to say, I need to take the survey, and so, whether it's a question on there that'll make them take the survey, or something to engage people to taking the survey.
Well, I, you know, in terms of a target window, I remember we had the same discussion when we were doing the zoning ordinance update, and we had it sort of in a, about a month or so timeline, I don't remember exactly, but, you know, what the consultant just said and what we observed was, you put it out, hey, we're going to do it, you know, we're asking a survey about this, to that case, it was zoning, and they showed us big, big peak of a bunch of people taking the survey, and then it just went to nothing.
Right.
And so, I think intentionally on the front end saying, we're going to give you, you know, three months to fill out a survey, I don't think, we'll get the people at the front. Now, what I would say is, if we put it out for a month and we get three surveys, then you're right, we would need to do that, and then, I mean, I think we'll come back when we do the survey and say, well, this is how many people responded, this is the results, and whether or not at that time, is, you know, is council, you say, no, we need more information, and we can always put it out then, but.
Contreras first.
So, in terms of, I think, in terms of a window, I think a month is good, because what we, like we found in the past, is that the folks that are going to do it, we're going to do it right away, and, you know, just keeping it out there doesn't get us any more folks. Now, in terms of an incentive, that would be something that we would have to be, you know, depending on what council wants to do in terms of what that looks like, or we'd have to go back and look at, look at ways to do that.
Mr. Contreras.
I'm not finishing, sorry. Let me go back to the question, I think that Mr. Contreras, Mr. Contreras asked as well. So, when you talked about bouncing it off of Republic, did you also use the complaints that currently they're receiving from Republic to make them part of this question somewhere else? In other words, did you read those complaints, and not just take them with what we thought we heard? Did you read some of those complaints to formulate some of these questions?
So, we did have a question, if I'm not mistaken, Jackie, that had to do with your experience with the customer, the call center, which was directed to a lot of folks' complaints about the call center, and the fact that, you know, they've had a call several times. I know that's something that's recurring that we hear about, is I've called Republic X amount of times at the call center. So, we did have a question about, about that.
Okay, and then last question for me for now. Your team came up with the questions, right?
Yes.
Your team, meaning public works.
Public works with PIO.
Okay, great. That was going to be my question, the PIO, we get a chance to look at it as well.
Oh, yeah, that's his, that's his baby right there. He's the one, he did the Survey Monkey and helped craft it for us, yes, sir. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Contreras and Mr. Harvey.
Well, back to what Councilman Cook said earlier about incentive. From what I heard about discussions that occurred before I came on council relative to this issue, and from the folks that I've talked to about this issue, I think passion is going to drive their response. I don't think we need a lot of, there might be other types of surveys, you know, how do you like our new city hall sign? They're not going to be driven to answer that, but this right here, this is, this seems to be an issue that brings out a lot of passion in folks, so I think there's going to be a significant response compared to other surveys.
You are, I'm going to try and put words in your mouth.
Don't do that.
Are you implying then, a bounty, my words, in response to Mr. Coates is not necessary?
I don't, I don't really think it is, because, I mean, this is a hot topic out there, and I think when they get that in the mail, wherever how they get it, they've got opinions on this.
Great, okay. Mr. Harvey.
So, what do we hope to accomplish in terms of doing this survey?
The first thing that I was, I want to accomplish is an assessment from the public on, again, the level of service, what their level of satisfaction is, so we have something that we can then have, that would engender some dialogue between us and Republic about, this is what the public is saying. And a lot of that's tied to the questions, or question number 12, that where we, you know, our, our wish is that the public would then take that box 12 to expound upon why they've answered, give them three stars, two stars, four stars, what have you. The other part is, is again tied to our conversation that we had at the last briefing session when we talked about whether or not some of the carts would be something that we wanted to consider, and that's really having to understand what the public is, how much trash are people really putting out? And are the trash use that we're having and we're seeing, at least via survey, would would fit in a trash cart to, you know, for one, one week, once a week service? You know, if the survey comes back and everybody puts out four hundred bags of trash, well, we know that that wouldn't fit in the cart. The cart holds about ten, ten, twelve, something like that, bags of trash, the cart?
Up two hundred and fifty pounds.
Two hundred and fifty pounds. So if, if people are putting out a reasonable amount of trash that would, would fit in a cart or go on the curb otherwise, that sort of helps us. And again, it's just sort of helping us show what this is what people are doing, that, you know, if, you know, again, try to help council, provide the information to council on that bigger decision, which is, do, does council want to pursue a amendment to the contract on level of service to move away from trash in the car?
So if I understood you correctly, in all of that explanation, it is possible, based on the results of the survey, to change the type of service that the community gets from Republic? Is it possible that based on the results of the survey, the community will find that there will be motivation to move from bags to carts? Is that possible, based on the results of this survey?
Yes, so that would be what we, we would communicate, at least the folks that take the survey, what their wishes are.
So people will know that when they, when they see the survey?
Yes, I think that is at the very top of the, top part of the survey on our purpose, was to help us understand your use and whether or not you want to use carts.
So therefore I agree with Mr. Contreras. If people are passionate about trash and they really like their current service, then, and they know based on what they read when they get the survey, that this, uh, their responses could lead to maintaining the same level of service or getting a totally different service. If people know all of that, I think, yes, they will be very motivated to respond.
So there is some open discussion in terms of incenting responses. I think that City Manager, when you come back on the October fourth meeting to approve the question.
Sir, I'm.
I gotta keep going back to the fourth and fifth thing then, because it says council approving questions on October fourth.
There's no October fourth meeting.
Well, then help me out here, because it says, survey questions approved by council by October fourth. Okay, so.
Meaning you do it tonight, before October fourth.
Okay, so here's, here's the deal. There have been expressions of yea or nay on an incentive.
No, you're taking the incentive off the table. I'm, I'm just, what I'm sharing with you is from experience of working with surveys. So you're going to hand it up first, I don't want to jump in.
Wait a minute, are you, are you taking the incentive issue off the table?
I'm not taking it off the table, I'm just telling you the importance of having some motivating factor other than just taking a survey. People, just from experience and, and twenty-five years of experience, they're, they're not going to just say, great, I'm passionate about trash, I'm going to take this survey. They're pushed to do it some other way, so I'm just telling you.
Your comment about being incenting a response to the survey has merit. So what I was going to say is that when we come, when you come back to approve this thing, that there's a question that you, that we as a council will vote yea or nay on an incentive. Not only will we approve the survey and the questions, that we will also approve whether there is or isn't going to be an incentive, or if Mr. Coates is pulling that right now, then that's off the table, we don't even worry about having an incentive.
No, I'm not pulling, I'm just telling you that just listening to, listening to my colleagues, they're not, they're saying that's, that the issue itself is enough, and I'm saying, and I'm saying that perhaps it is not enough that you have to come up with something, whether it's money or whatever you want to come up with.
Well, that's, that's why it's a point of we either reach consensus around table now that there is or isn't going to be an incentive applied to this thing.
Here.
And then if, well, let me, let me, let me touch with Mr. Coates first, go ahead, Mr. Coates.
What you're going to say is relevant to what they're discussing, you can go ahead.
Uh, my recommendation is that we start this process, and if we see that surveys are coming in slow, then we have a council meeting at the second council meeting in October and say, we need to do more to get people involved. But I think we start out with a survey to see where the citizens' response is. And if we see that it's not coming in effectively, then we make a decision like that.
Okay.
Good, now.
And again, we would not, by, on the nineteenth of October, we wouldn't have a survey anything other than what was delivered during the soft rollout, because the, the official survey would be part of the November. And then we can come back and say, we've got this many surveys based without incentive. And, you know, obviously, if you want more, then we would have to come up with incentive ideas.
Okay, Mr. Coates.
Thank you, and I apologize because I know we spent a lot of time on this already, but I, I did have some questions about the survey, so.
Sure.
So question number five, it asks about the last six months, March twenty-twenty-one to present. Have they had issues or have they had issues? Is there any benefit to stretching that further back to twelve months?
We talked about it, but as you probably remember from when we were doing the level of service, in terms of customer complaints, it was relatively flat. We had one peak in February, and what we wanted to try to screen out was everybody talking about hurricane, or, or winter storm Yuri. As, which we all know was a huge spike in complaints, and that was why we just kept it in six months and.
And then in the follow-up with that, so it asks, I've had no issues with trash service, or I have had issues. Can we put something else in there for them to explain what the issue is? Because even issue, you say issue, that could be a very broad category of clients.
Yes.
You know, they dropped a piece of trash on my lawn, that's an issue, as opposed to not having trash picked up at all.
I would defer to PIO, is that, I mean, I know when we had talked, the intent was for that box twelve to be where you sort of expound on, on your experience, I would have to defer to PIO.
And you just say it there in box twelve, and if you had issues identified in number five, please expound on it as part of the question number twelve, cover that.
So at the top of the survey, you'll notice the second paragraph is a comment field is provided at the end of the survey. There, please go into further detail regarding any of your survey answers. So the goal was to make the survey kind of compact so that it looks, surveys that are too long tend to chase people off. They tend to lose interest. If they see that there's twenty, thirty questions, they won't really even start it. So that goal was to kind of like make it pretty tight and then give them that comment field with that part of the stuff at the top, so that they could keep that in mind, oh, I'm going to go into some detail on this question. And then they have that comment at bottom.
And just, I guess I'm just thinking about the goal of making sure that it's as, as detailed as possible. And if that question five, and they just put, yes, I had issue, no, I didn't have issues, and they don't explain, then again, it, it leaves it very broad. I don't know if there's anywhere we can change the, the dictionary, the, the language itself, or just to make sure that, again, something minor doesn't become an issue that goes into that category.
I think that I, we can put a comment field there, definitely. That's easy enough to add.
And then is there anywhere we can put a question about how many actual reports people made? So how many times they actually called the city?
Sure.
Or if they actually called Republic to file a complaint?
Don't, don't we have that information anyway?
We have, we maintain logs by address of folks that call the service center. And then when we get the report from Republic, those are also logged by address. And so we would have to query that to see if there was, you know, if one person is called in twenty-two times or whatever. You'd have to go look at the addresses and go, wow, this is, this is a property that's been calling in a lot.
Well, can we get that information with our survey results? Get an update on the complaint list that you have?
Because if that, I mean, that's the purpose of filing a survey.
An updated to our, our chart on how many complaints we've been getting.
Right, just to go along with the results of the survey, I think they go together well.
Yes, we can have one in, in, for that January, post-January presentation to council.
And I have one more question. Number eight says, on average, my household sets garbage out for collection once per week, twice per week, every other week. And that question almost seems like it, it almost answers itself because, I mean, on any given trash day, if you've got some trash, you're going to put it out. So it's, it's almost every twice per week for most people, so I don't know if that question is relevant or if it's just redundant.
And, and again, that was just, again, just to gauge some, you know, if, if smaller families are just, you know, people die themselves, just put it out once a week. You know, again, it was, the idea was just to understand behaviors. Certainly can strike that.
Because it could, it could give the impression that more people would prefer twice a week service when maybe they don't need it.
Correct.
And I may have missed, is this survey strictly residential?
Yes. The, the target was residential only.
You know, one of the, I'll, you talked about your soft rollout. I mean, just, I don't want to belabor the point of soft rollout. So Tim, the soft rollout, you say you're going to do it on national night out, right?
Correct.
And that soft rollout means you're just going to hand surveys out or you're collecting.
We would have the surveys for people to fill out or QR code at the, the booth. We always have a booth that talks about recycling, talks about defend your drains, water conservation. So in the public works booth, we would have opportunity for people to fill out the survey during national night out when they just do that.
Okay, good, so that means, that's what defines a soft rollout. Here's a, a different way of identifying a soft rollout and get us to participate as council members as well. Say each one of us take twenty-five of these surveys ourselves. We know twenty-five people within our district and have them to fill out this survey. The purpose of that is then is to say, is to gather them back and we ask our, our constituents, did this survey, how did you feel about this survey? Did this survey answer all of the questions that you thought we should have been adding to it? Is there any additional questions that you may want to ask? Because we have some great ideas ourselves, but I would love to see, before we start getting all this information in, what a pilot of people would say first. Again, I'm not just making this up, this is industry stuff that happens industry-wide, period. It's, that's how you pilot a particular survey program, so whether it's twenty-five each council person, we bring it back, give it to Raimi, and that question is, how did you feel about the survey? Did it work? Were there any questions that you thought we should have added, we didn't add? So just a thought for us as well.
So, so my thoughts were among those same lines, because we won't be here to answer any questions ourselves that night. So I don't know if that's beneficial, you know, for the sessions or not.
No, no, you just, you take, you take twenty-five.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, just in general, that soft rollout, that particular night, we won't be in town, we'll be in.
Right, but that, that's our work, that's our rollout, that's why I was wanting to identify the difference between a soft rollout. His soft rollout is just passing them out and getting them completed. We're not asking other questions of, hey, how did you feel about that, those, those survey questions?
But, Mr. Rerico, you're going to have an opportunity to respond to the survey some point during the survey time, during the window.
I like his idea, I, I probably will go call up some of my, uh, people that comment the most and really get, get down to it, so.
One, one thing that I would sort of just ask is if we could push them more to the QR code and the online, because for every hard copy we get back, it's a staff member having to do the data entry. And so a few is fine, if we, if all of you were very successful and, I mean, we might have like three hundred of them and we would be, you know, in a lot of hand jamming.
Code's great.
Yeah, five or ten, I just want to see what, what a citizen would say once they take their survey. You can get feedback before you go out to the masses.
So it's an individual decision, like any council member wants to have twenty-five or ten or five or six. Do whatever you'd like to do, suggestion's been made, you can accept or not. All right, I think we're done.
Yeah, real quick, so Greg had asked if it was just residential, residential and commercial. Who says it is residential and commercial?
Well, we have residential hand collect, so that would be part of it. But again, um, the main, main focus would be for the residential. Um, and again, we have.
You can have commercial.
Well, we have commercial hand collect, we have, we have like twelve thousand households and a few, a few hundred, um, commercial hand collects.
You have twelve thousand households that you collect trash for?
Roughly, yes.
Well, residential?
Yes.
Like thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety-six or something like that.
Not that many.
Yeah, it is. You got the US Census.
Well, yeah, well, there's also how many people are paying a bill that month. And so sometimes it's even around eleven, eleven thousand a bill a month.
Okay. All right, we are twelve minutes away from seven straight up. So, uh, Mr. Thibodeau, if I want to get out of here at five till, that means you got seven minutes, yes or no?
Gave us the briefest brief that was ever briefed. Here we go. All right, so this is really just a review item and an update on what has been discussed in the past. So mobile food vendors and, and food trucks. So going back to the discussions leading up to the adoption of the zoning ordinance, the use of food truck park was established. Part of that discussion was, staff will come back in the future and provide a supporting ordinance that talks about the function of these units onsite, namely food trucks. So the purpose of the ordinance as well is to be focused on delineating between the type of, type of mobile food vendors, food trucks is one of them, and mobile vending units. In order to create kind of safe environments, this picture showing queuing on a sidewalk, here's a nice safe environment where you could see the patrons and the food trucks are out of the way of blocking parking stalls and things like that. So we're really concerned about performance with this ordinance. The type of mobile vending units, we have food trucks, trailers, mobile kiosks, which are these little guys right here, coming gearing for the future, if that ever becomes a thing, motorcycle food vendors, and then I think this is referred to as a gut truck, something like that.
Roach coach.
Roach coach.
I thought we didn't consider it as a food, official food truck.
It's really not, but you do want to have some standards. The thing is, we're not really developing all that much with new developments, you're not going to see this very much. But if they do, you know, we, we talked about this internally, other cities kind of include these because they know they're going to come in, and you might as well catch them and make them have, you know, have to come in and get permit, you know, instead of them just wandering into your city and do their thing.
What about trailerable, trailerable smoker units, which are already present in our city?
That would be a slightly different situation, but perhaps not. I mean, you can really, it would be something like this, this is really what you're seeing. So, so long as it meets all pertinent health codes and it's inspected, you know, it can be approved.
Because we've got a nut and switch already.
And that would be an item that could potentially be approved. All right, so the nuts and bolts of this, here's a draft image of the mobile unit, mobile vendor food truck permit. So it'll outline specific items for mobile food vendors. It's a little small to see, but our mobile food vendors will have to submit a site plan, tax certificates, basically certificates and licenses to show that they are legitimate business. Food trucks are going to go one step further. A key example is sales tax reporting that has a signed affidavit, so we make sure we can capture that, that revenue as well when they come in. All right, performance review, so when we get these.
You got a question.
I'm sorry?
I do want him to finish.
Okay. So when we get these site plans in, we start reviewing sites, basically we're going to make sure that the units aren't going to obstruct or interfere with fire lanes, maneuvering areas, required parking spaces, and queuing lines won't, won't become an obstacle either with the maneuvering areas. And then, of course, the inspections that we have, where our health inspectors, fire inspectors just follow, the general information that they have as part of their, how would they do? And so really the goal tonight, as we work to get this ordinance to you at the next meeting on October nineteenth, is some fees, so different fees per vendor type, do we want to do something like that? To give you an idea, if I were to average the surrounding communities that do fee this permit, it's about two hundred dollars for basically the application fee and the renewal every year. And then they usually go through a renewal process every year, and then an inspection as well. Location proximity, some cities put extra regulations on, on distance from brick and mortar, their restaurants. And how do we feel about that? Residential areas are included sometimes as well, and any special conditions for use of public space. Some cities apply additional fees to operate in a park. Some actually, like the city of Frisco actually gives food trucks a little bit of a break because they're very pro, pro food truck up there, so that actually food trucks are a little bit cheaper up there. So. So that was basically it. Yes, sir.
So when will we be able to vote for this?
This will be, this will be before you at the October 19th, uh, city council meeting.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I like that, uh, idea of having the distance, uh, from already established restaurants because you get maybe two or three of them in a parking lot and they could really have an impact on two or three restaurants around.
Sure, sure. There's that competition feel too that comes up, you know, from your established restaurants.
Mr. Cooks.
Uh, as far as the safety regulations and permitting, so that fall under neighborhood services and make sure that all that's enforced and that fall under police.
So health will inspect, fire will inspect, um, and, uh, under certain circumstances, you know, I would go out there and make sure, it was actually established per the site plan if it's a very special situation, make sure it's queued up right.
Where neighborhood services would get involved is if they catch them sort of running around without a permit.
Yeah.
Then we, they would direct them to the permit desk to get them, uh, permitted. That would be, that would be where neighborhood services would get.
Basically, the, the inspection would be similar to the inspections that go on right now at Duncan Switch.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cooks.
So, and you can come back with this later, we only have one health inspector. And so I'm just curious, city manager, how the one he, health inspector will be to do this and the other things that we're talking about as well?
Uh, I, I've had, as recent as even possibly today, had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Ramey regarding my concern with the amount of work with the number of restaurants we have. So we will be having that discussion, also looking at what do we do? I have simple questions, what happens when she goes on vacation? So we're having that discussion right now, uh, just because I am concerned that we need to make sure that's a priority for us.
How about third party and include the third party fees in that fee?
That was the discussion we had. I know in some cities, they use Dallas County to do their inspections. We talked about Bureau of Health and Arts, but we are looking to make sure we do have a backup plan because this is a very important activity. And the health inspector does more than food, so.
Was there something in there about hard stand?
It would have to be a motorized, are you talking about a motorized type unit?
No, where it's actually, where it's actually sitting, does it have to be on hard stand or can it be on gravel or can it be, uh, chipped concrete or what?
Oh, well, you want it to be on an improved surface to some degree, um, that can, you know, handle the weight. And it'd be, I believe they have, uh, through inspections, uh, uh, otherwise that they have to support themselves.
See, now you sound like a lawyer to some degree. Improved service in some degree. We don't have that language in our organs about.
So this is something we, we talked about, and I think this is something where council feedback would be, be good. So a lot of times what we see with the food trucks is I've, I've got a piece of land, it's commercial land, and I'm sitting on it and I want to do something with it while I wait for it to pop, which is sort of what they do in Austin. And so the question is, at what point, you know, what triggers, um, would we say, okay, well, gravel is sufficient and then go, oh, wait, this is a food truck park, you've got X number here. Uh, and that's something we've talked about as well as staff, is that what, what's the trigger for when we make them do concrete paths or do, um, shore power, uh, sort of like it, like Clyde Warren where they plug in and they just, every, you know, they take care of everything. And so we're, we're trying to balance, you know, that was some of the things that we've been discussing and, and definitely would, would, what council input if, uh, where, where those thresholds are and those, and, and expectation. Um, nowhere would it be this parking on grass because what we don't want is a stubbed food truck.
Right. I actually like the term to some degree.
Use the flexibility.
Improved service to some degree.
To kind of delineate two things.
And that would leave it up to approval of you guys.
Well.
To say this is to some degree or it's not to some degree.
I could expound on that. So if it's a food truck park, you're talking about an established piece of property that is for food trucks. That's going to have cement, that's going to be set up like a, like a professional, if you've ever been up to Main Streets in Frisco or the, uh, the hub in Plano or something like that.
Here, here's a, here's a, an outlier hypothesis. We have an owner of commercial property within our city. The owner of commercial property says, hey, I can bring in seven food trucks this weekend and I can park them here and it's not grass, but it's an improved surface to some degree.
That's right. So that would be the other thing. It's not a food truck park we're talking about anymore.
Exactly.
So we're talking about a potential piece of property. And so that's where that site plan, that internal site plan review comes into play. So we can review these things and, you know, if we see a gravel area and it keeps all the activity out of the cemented parking area, well, that's a good thing to do. If it's grass, then, you know, we have an issue and we've got to come up with a solution before I approve.
To me, that's the preferred latitude and flexibility in your hands in terms of approving or sort of saying yea or nay.
Yes, sir.
But I would want, I mean, I love food trucks. I want my food trucks all over the city. I'm, the designated spot sounds great versus to your example of a commercial person saying, I want to bring seven food trucks in. If it's a designated area where we can add other food trucks to the future, that's fine. But just to say, so let's just, we can park food trucks here because I got a bit coming in. I like the designated spots. I think we should talk about that more.
Maybe, but I like the flexibility of a commercial property owner saying, hey, I can bring in seven or 10 food trucks and do a great event right here in this city and not associate with anything but having food trucks, which is what they do all over the state.
That's right. And what typically happens is you have excess parking on pieces of property. So your, your business is an office and you're required to have eight spaces, but you have actually 12. So we'll use those four excess spaces to actually kind of stage the, the truck and make sure it's bringing it away that doesn't.
And this is where we rely on your expertise to do what's best in the cases. Uh, folks, we're going to have to terminate this thing. Uh, Assistant City Manager Brown, what I think we will do is take your briefing on the new Firearms Care Act and put it at the end of the city council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And we also have two executive sessions. Uh, we will do those two executive sessions at the end, well.
One is rolling.
One of, one, one of them is prior to.
Last four agenda.
I see that. So we will call into executive session before we get to the last four items on the city council meeting. Okay? And then see how we go from there. All right, please, if you need a quick break, please do so.
Time at 6:59?
6:59.
Gentlemen, welcome to Duncanville City Council Meeting of September the 21st, and we are calling to order our city council meeting at 7:05. The first item on our agenda for tonight, we're going to be moving around, having to make some adjustments in terms of time that we spent in our briefing and work session, but we're going to go with our invocation next. And for Pastor Calvin Funchess, please come forward and folks, if you would please rise for the invocation.
Let us bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you with gratitude for the many blessings you have granted our city. We express thanksgiving for the mercy you have shown our citizens, our leaders, and our economy during the pandemic. You have sustained us, watched over us, and kept us for such a time as this that we might return to you the praise due your name. We come to you with humble hearts that acknowledge your supremacy and sovereignty over all things. There isn't one need in this city that has escaped your careful gaze. That is why we can trust you to help our leaders make wise decisions in keeping with your counsel. Grant them the ability to understand the ramifications of their decisions and bestow on them an unusual grace to build consensus. We ask that you protect our first responders, and we can pray these bold prayers because of Jesus. Now to the King of Ages, immortal, invisible, the only God, be honor and glory forever. Amen.
Amen. I might add, if you can hear me, that I have watched this young man grow. He was a student at the university at which I am still teaching, but I've watched him and his wife grow in their spiritual walk, not only going from their academics, but now into their call from, from God and what he's doing. So Calvin, my best on behalf of the entire city council for your call and what you're doing to that. Bless you. Please join me in pledges to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. So in terms of housekeeping, folks, uh, we did not finish all of the discussion items in our briefing session, so the discussion on the new Firearms Care Act, which is item 2C for the briefing session, that will be done at the very end of our city council meeting, uh, right after the quarterly report from the Economic Development Director. And we have item number two in executive session that pertains to four items on our city council agenda. We will, uh, recess city council to go into that executive session prior to those four items on the agenda. Then we will come back out and take care of those last four items on our agenda. I know it's a little confusing, but that's kind of the roadmap that we have to work on tonight. So we appreciate your, your understanding and working with us with that. Next item on our agenda is item number one. It's the mayor's report. And I have a couple items and we do have a three-minute time limit. Now, I am going to ask the indulgence of the, uh, city council that my mayor's report is going to take somewhat longer than three minutes. Uh, because as you'll notice there, I'm going to give recognition to champion of our city. I do have some items to discuss and then I will do the recognition of champion of our city. Uh, first item, I want to invite everyone to coffee with the mayor, uh, next Wednesday on the 20, the 29th at 8:30 to 9:30 in the morning at the senior center. So if you're up that early and want a cup of coffee, please come out and sit down and have a chat. The official census numbers are out. They're not easy to find, but they are there. And it's on usensus.gov/quickfacts, so you can find it in any city in the United States and drill down. And I'm happy to say, we no longer have to say that the city of Duncanville is around 40,000. The Duncan, city of Duncanville is over 40,000 people, actually 40,706. So we're very happy that we have truly and finally eclipsed the 40,000 mark. At the September 9th Regional Transportation Council Meeting of North Central Texas Council of Governments, of which I am a member, some data was given out, which is very interesting, I think, for our entire city to understand that the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex is now at 7.9 million people. And it is estimated and projected that each year between now and the next census, the DFW metroplex is going to grow by 150,000 people a year. That will put us in 2030 at almost 12 million people in the DFW metroplex. What that does is it focuses every city, including the city of Duncanville, on its infrastructure and how we accommodate that and look forward in addition to economic One thing of interest, if you ever travel a toll road in the city or in, in the metroplex, uh, there is a law, I'm sure you may or may not be aware of it, but there is a law about move over, slow down. If there's an accident or an emergency vehicle, first responder vehicle on any highway, you are required by law to slow down and move over. Interestingly, that law did not apply to toll roads in the state of Texas. It does now. As a result of the 87th legislature, that law now applies to both toll roads and regular highways. So please try to watch out for that and be in compliance with that. Uh, the, uh, last thing before I get to the champion is that on September 14th, council member Cooks and I participated with Senator West in a town hall in which he imparted information with, uh, from the state of Texas, from the city of Dallas, from the county of Dallas, and from the Texas Workforce, uh, Commission in terms of its, what was it, eviction, I have it here, eviction diversion money. That there is a, there is a vast amount of money available for individuals that can qualify. Uh, it's a, it's a very legal process is what we were educated on and the lawyers were helping us with this town hall. Uh, but if anyone that you know is, is, has an issue with possible eviction, even landlords, it applies to landlords and tenants both in terms of the legal, uh, processes that have to be done. So that information is available on Senator West's website. It was very educational, uh, in terms for us going through that. So, uh, without any further ado, what I would like to do, now, is, is, is the video ready? We didn't get the video. We didn't get the video. Now, I will explain it. Yep, the Channel 5 video. Well, while he's doing that, I would like to invite the Ewing's, John Ewing, John the second, and DeeDee, to come up. You may recall, I hope, that I have a program of recognizing champions of the city. And it just happens to be a whole family. And what it is, is that, um, if you can pull this video, you'll see it, but, uh, they...
Here you go, sir.
Oh, that one, sorry. John and DeeDee have built, created, and established and sustained, I guess, would you call it a ministry or just an organization?
I'd say both.
Both.
Yes.
Called legacy builders. I don't know why. I guess it's pride in our people and for what y'all do. So I want to recognize John and DeeDee Ewing and John the second as champions of the city of Duncanville. John and Deniqua Ewing operate Young Legacy Builders to inspire young kidpreneurs to be successful entrepreneurs in society. In doing so, they inculcate in young people character-building attributes of honesty, integrity, self-confidence, and leadership, coupled with an understanding of business finances. In their own words, quote, "We are determined to break social barriers that exist between juveniles and law enforcement, strengthening a generation and securing our future." This past July, they held a children's business fair in Armstrong Park to showcase the amazing and awesome businesses talents of their students. As a result of the event, John Ewing and his son, John the second, were interviewed on NBC Channel 5. They strive each day to build strong children that contribute to society. John and DeeDee Ewing are outstanding representatives of our community and bring great credit upon themselves and the city of Duncanville. For their sustaining achievements in the lives of young people, the Ewings and young legacy builders are champions of the city. So with that, to John and DeeDee. And a medallion, go along with it. Did you, and you found the video?
Yes.
If, please, uh, this, this is, this is where I need your indulgence, counsel. It's three minutes and 30 seconds long, but it's important because in it you will see myself, council member Cooks, and city manager Phil Benavides.
Joining us today is founder John C. Ewing and his son, John Ewing the second. Welcome to Texas today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Such a pleasure to meet both of you.
You as well.
Tell me about this organization. What have you all created?
Yeah, so we are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). Uh, we offer free classes to kids ages nine to 18. Uh, we offer classes like kidpreneurship, stocks, cryptocurrency, as well as some integrity and character classes as well.
This sounds so needed and so exciting. How did this get started?
Well, it started with my son. Uh, he was a struggling reader. Uh, my wife and I, we invested a hundred dollars into him and we told him he was going to write his own book.
Ah.
So we built a lemonade stand and we told him exactly what to say and what to do. And in four weeks, he raised over $3,000.
Oh, my gosh, you're such a great entrepreneur.
Thank you.
I'm freaking out. I am holding your book.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, how did, how did you even do this?
Well, I was, when I was nine years old, I'm 11 now, when I was nine years old... Well, I was, when I was nine years old, I'm eleven now, when I was nine years old, I wrote a book called You Can Do All Things to Inspire Other Kids Like Myself, That They Can Do All Things, whether it be firefighter, entrepreneur, pediatrician, and I thought it'd be a great encouragement to other students.
When you see now that it is published, and it's your son.
Yes.
Being all these different careers, like, what is that like for you as a dad?
Just amazing. My wife and I are just so encouraged. He's now a four-point-oh student, and you know, he's, he's thriving. And I think what it did is it, it built confidence in him.
Yeah.
As a young, young entrepreneur.
Amazing. Okay, so now you are able to do this, and you're wanting to do this on such a bigger scale as well, to help other children, along with your son.
Absolutely.
What do you, what do you hope to do? Kind of what are your plans?
Yeah, we're planning to inspire as many young kids as possible. We're looking to open up our own facility to where we can start teaching kids in-house. And not the typical school setting, but more of an office setting, or where we can use props to, because I believe they, they learn better with props. And so we have some great instructors.
I understand you recently hosted a business fair for kids.
We did. We did it in Dunkerville, Texas. We had eighteen businesses, kidpreneurs.
And so this was a business fair, like any other business fair, but all the businesses were like youth entrepreneurs?
All kidpreneurs, absolutely. The food vendors, everyone was all kidpreneurs.
That is incredible.
Yes.
Yes, how can we help you? I understand there's a unique way that we can text and give.
Absolutely. You can text the word legacy to two-one-four-four-four-four-five-four-zero-three, and you could text that legacy with any amount, and that would definitely help us.
And so the services that you offer, are they free to anyone? Is anyone welcome to come and participate?
Yes, absolutely free. Yes, ma'am.
So we need to help you get a building.
Yes.
Is that the goal?
That's the goal.
Do you know how much money you need for that? That seems big. That seems like a book to me, like, that's big.
Yeah, we looked at a few, they're pretty pricey.
We need a lot of texts.
We need a lot of texts, absolutely.
Well, it was so nice to meet both of you. Good luck on your journey. Congratulations to you on being a published author.
Thank you.
It's such a big deal. I'm just so impressed. Thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
To learn more about their free services, or if you would like to support their organization, go online to younglegacybuilders.com.
Thank you, city, thank you. Thank you, city council, for your indulgence. John, I'd like to say a few words. Or John Junior?
We just want to thank you guys. Thank Mayor Gordon for this, this wonderful piece of encouragement. And I'll thank you all for your attendance. I just want to say, we're glad to be in Dunkerville. We're looking to be a more intricate and part of Dunkerville as well, and so we're glad to be here. We're glad to be residents of Dunkerville as well. Thank you.
I second everything that you said. We're grateful to be a part of Dunkerville, grateful to be residents, and nice to share this award with you and your presence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bless you. Got to get a hold of myself one of these days. Let's see. Okay, moving on, council member reports. Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make mine very brief, but there's a lot of good things happening around Dunkerville. There's a lot of good things that will be happening in Dunkerville as well. But one of the things I want to acknowledge just very quickly is Coach Samples earned his three-hundredth win. Proud of those DHS Panthers, and especially after they took DeSoto down. I was, I was very pleased with that. Thank you.
Mr. Vera Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of piggyback off what council member McNabb said, this week in Dallas, the Texas Association of School Boards will be holding their annual conference, and our very own school board here in Dunkerville will be competing against five other, well, they're in the five, so five school districts for the school board of Texas. So we want to wish them the best of luck, encouragement, and our prayers as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Cooks.
This is from the General Assembly of the United Nations, nineteen eighty-one. It says, recalling that the promotion of peace, both at an international and national level, is among the main purposes of the United Nations in conformity with its charter, reaffirming that as set forth in the preamble of the Constitution of the United Nations, educational, scientific, and cultural organization, since wars begin in the minds of men, it is the minds of men that the defenses of peace must be constructed, that a peace based exclusively upon the political and economic arrangements of governments would not be a peace which could secure the unanimous, lasting, and sincere support of the peoples of the world, and that the peace must therefore be founded, if it is not to fail, upon the intellectual and moral solidarity of mankind. Acknowledging the conclusions of the conference that it would be appropriate to devote a specific time to concentrate the efforts of the United Nations and its member states, as well as of the whole of mankind, to promoting the ideals of peace and to giving positive evidence of their commitment to peace in all viable ways, the General Assembly of the United Nations declares that the third Tuesday of September, the opening day of the regular sessions of the General Assembly, shall be officially proclaimed and observed as International Day of Peace, and shall be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. And so today is the third Thursday of September, or third Tuesday, so today is actually the International Day of Peace as established by the United Nations in nineteen eighty-one. And this day is meant to be devoted to alleviating conflict and causes of tension. It's a day for ceasefires and reconciliation between UN member states and the whole of mankind. And a great teacher once said that, if at all possible, as much as lies within you, live peaceably with all men. And I believe that's a good teaching, a good principle to follow, to pursue peace with one another. And so today, on the International Day of Peace, I want to encourage us all here on council, and for you as residents and as neighbors and friends, to do our best to live at peace with one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Mr. Cooks.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Meet, Connect, and Learn this month will be for District Four. We will talk about trash, grass, and parked cars, and where do we go from here? So I'd like to invite District Four residents out to the library. We will be in person and in Zoom at the library on this coming Saturday, going on the twenty-fifth at eleven o'clock to twelve fifteen. Then second, on October the second, Meet, Connect, and Learn, we will have Dr. Mark Smith as our guest, talking about the DISD school district. So I'd encourage you to look at the website and to join us as we discuss DISD, Dunkerville ISD, with, with Dr. Smith. I want to also congratulate the Ewing family as well for being a tremendous asset to our Dunkerville family, so thank you very much. And then as an embarrassing, embarrassment piece today, it is not the official day, but I think sometime this month, our city manager birthday is sometime this month. And so I think we could almost sing, but if that would embarrass her, we would, but I won't sing today, city manager. We'll hold off on that, but a pre Happy Birthday to You as you prepare to celebrate your birthday.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Happy birthday to you.
That's why we wouldn't sing.
That's as far as it goes. Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Okay. Seeing no other, city manag, city council members' reports, city managers' report. Ms. Aretha Ferro Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The police department, this Saturday, September twenty-fifth, the police department personnel will conduct a catalytic converter etching event at City Hall parking lot from eight AM to eleven AM. This is a very important event, as we have held other events. It is on a first-come, first-served, but I am thankful that Chief Levigny was able to have another event for our community. On Tuesday, October fifth, is our National Night Out. It's going to be held at Dunkerville Recreation Center, two oh one James Collins Boulevard. And last and certainly not least on this, from the police department, the police department will also hold an open house at the police station parking lot at two oh three East Wheatland on October ninth. From an internal standpoint, I am pleased to announce today that we officially have a new managing director of fiscal services, Ms. Adina Atmore. She is officially a part of our Dunkerville family. I want to thank her for serving as our interim finance director, and also after competing for this position, being selected to serve in this role, just so everyone will know, she brings thirty years of experience in finance, to include having, holding a CPA in both Texas and New York, a master's, a bachelor's degree, and certified in every financial institution that you can imagine, from a certified Texas GFOA to US GFOA to procurement. And so we are pleased to have her continuing to serve our city in this. And so if you join me and just give Ms. Adina a welcome hand. Secondly, we will have joining us the new executive assistant to the city manager. His name is Mr. David Keys. He will start on October eleventh. I am so excited to have Mr. Keys on board. He is coming to us from Nakatish, they don't say Tosh, it's Nakadish, Louisiana. He currently serves as the executive assistant to the parish president, which is equivalent to the county president, and also the director of planning and zoning. He brings both public and private experience here with both a bachelor's, master's degree. He actually, formerly, one of his internships was with the Texas Rangers, and so please join me, and we will welcome him on board and introduce him at our next council meeting. But I'm excited to have him on board and his wealth of expertise. Just as an update for citizens and questions that ask, we are moving forward with our selection process for our police chief. There will be a community event. More details to come on that. We are excited about this process. We want to give the community as much input in this process and as be part of the selection. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Moving on to item number two, proclamations and presentations. The first one, item two A, proclamation for September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one as National Information Technology Professionals Day, presented by Mr. McNabb and accepted by Mr. Tracy Beekman, our director of IT services. Whereas the use of technology is flourishing and has a huge impact on operations around the world, and whereas the information technology department serves the community through the departments of police, fire, public works, parks, and recreation, general government, finance, and all divisions of, and is instrumental in helping these departments in essential community services that affect the everyday lives of our citizens, and whereas the US tech industry is a major driving force in the overall economy, and whereas the information technology draws on a highly educated and skilled US workforce, and whereas cloud computing, mobility, big data, automation, and social technologies become common elements of businesses of all sizes, with that said, cybersecurity becomes a constant concern with the need for employees with technical expertise, and whereas booming technology, economic and demographic shifts continue to rapidly change our world, it is more important than ever that organizations from small businesses to government agencies to embrace effective information technology practice. Now, therefore, on the behalf of our mayor, Barry L. Gordon, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Dunkerville, do hereby proclaim September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one as National IT Professionals Day throughout the city of Dunkerville. The next proclamation we have is Recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month, and I will be doing that. Before doing so, I would like to invite any Hispanic member that happens to be here in our audience to come up and stand with me, especially Señora Francesca Riso, if she would come up and stand with me, please. And muchas gracias a señora Riso para traducir esta proclamación. And you are? Oh, more. Who do we have?
I'm Embrasa Lazar.
My name's Emily.
And we have Mr. L. Hernandez with us as well. He happens to be with Atmos, but he's up here today for this. Oh, very nice. Pleasure to have you. Spare with me. Been practicing. Proclamación, mientras que cada año del quince de septiembre al de octubre estadounidenses el país celebra el mes nacional de la herencia hispana apresiando a historia. La herencia y las contribuciones de la comunidad de los antepasados que vinieron de México, España, el Caribe, y América del Sur, y América Central. Y mientras que el mes de la herencia hispana comenzó originalmente con una semana de commemoration cuando fue presentado por primero véspero con jazzista George Jorge I. Brown en junio mil novecientos sesenta y ocho. Con el movimiento de derechos civiles, la necesidad de la encoser, las contribuciones de la comunidad latino ganó aceptación en la década mil novecientos sesenta. Y mientras que más tarde se extendió a una salvación de treinta días por el presidente Ronald Reagan, comenzando el quince de septiembre y terminado el quince de octubre, se convirtió en ley agosto mil novecientos ochenta. Y mientras que los hispanos han sido parte integral a la prosperidad de los Estados Unidos. Sus contribuciones a la nación son inmenso y demuestran lo mejor de los valores estadounidenses. Y mientras que aún mayores son las contribuciones a la prosperidad y sustentabilidad de la ciudad de Dunkerville por parte de nuestros hispanos cuales componen cuarenta por ciento de nuestra población. Y mientras que vemos su emprendimiento por sus muchos negocios en nuestra ciudad. Y vemos su inversión en nuestra ciudad por su servicio en muchas de nuestras juntas y comisiones. Y por lo tanto, nuestros hispanos son de las partes valiosas de la diversa población de nuestra ciudad. Y estoy orgulloso y previsible de una rol se especialmente. En fe de ello, he escrito sus, I'm sorry, suscrito, suscrito la presente y entiendo esta proclamación este día de veintiuno de septiembre. Barry L. Gordon, alcalde, ciudad de Dunkerville. What did he say? Whereas every year from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, Americans celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month by appreciating the community's history, heritage, and contributions of the ancestors of those who came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, and South and Central America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month originally started with one week of commemoration when it was first introduced by Congressman Georgie Brown in June nineteen sixty-eight. With the civil rights movement, the need to recognize the contributions of the Latino community gained acceptance in the nineteen sixties. And whereas, it was later extended to a thirty-day celebration by President Ronald Reagan starting on September fifteenth. starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th, and was later made a law in August 1988. And whereas, Hispanic Americans have been integral to the prosperity of the United States. Their contributions to the nation are immeasurable and they demonstrate the best of American values. And whereas, even greater are the contributions to the prosperity and sustainability of the City of Duncanville by Hispanics that make up forty percent of our population. And whereas, we see their entrepreneurship by their many businesses in our city and we see their investment in our city by their serving on many of our boards and commissions. Now therefore, our Hispanic Americans comprise a valuable portion of our city's diverse population, and I am proud and privileged to give them special honor. Senora Riso. And here's the proclamation in Spanish as well.
Thank you very much.
Would like to say a few words.
Sometimes I'm at a loss for words, but tonight is not one, but I'll make it short. We really appreciate the recognition of our Latino community in Duncanville. The 2020 census shows that we are forty percent of the population in Duncanville, not just forty percent in one district or another, but the entire city. And we continue to participate and to motivate. I, by good fortune, was elected President of the Duncanville LULAC Council. For those of you that do not know what LULAC stands for, it's a League of United Latin American Citizens, and everyone is invited to join, not just Latinos. And we also are looking forward to working with the Duncanville High School to again organize a LULAC Youth Council, and it's sponsored by our Adult LULAC Council, and we concentrate on providing scholarship monies for them to go on to college. Madam Vice President, would you like to say anything?
Thank you.
We thank you very much. Viva la raza.
Thank you, Dela. Thank you.
Sammy?
Wakeland?
Chief.
Our next presentation, proclamation, is Recognizing October 3 through 9 as National Fire Prevention Week, presented by Councilmember Barak Cruz. And accepted by Fire Marshal Wakeland, Steve Wakeland.
Officer, the Mayor, Duncanville City Champions Proclamation. Whereas, the City of Duncanville, Texas is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Duncanville, and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. Homes are the locations where people are the greatest risk from fire. Whereas, smoke alarms detect smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire so that you may have just seconds to escape safely. Whereas, working smoke alarms save lives by properly early, by providing early warning of fire and your family can escape. Whereas, residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the different sounds of the alarms and how to respond. Whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas, residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities. Whereas, Duncanville's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. Whereas, Duncanville residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire at home. Whereas, the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, effectively serve to remind us of the importance of learning the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now therefore, our Mayor Barry Gordon of Duncanville, Texas do hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this community, I urge all the people of Duncanville to learn the sounds of fire safety and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Duncanville's Fire and Emergency Services during this Fire Prevention Week. Thank you. You want to say anything? Okay, alright. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Our next presentation, our proclamation, is Recognizing October 5th as National Night Out, presented by Mayor Protem, Mr. Harvey. Accepted by Interim Chief Mark Levigny of our Police Department.
Whereas, National Night Out was introduced by the National Association of Town Watch in 1984 as a national program, which would be coordinated by local crime prevention agencies and organizations that would involve entire communities at one time. And whereas, over thirty-eight point one million people in sixteen thousand five hundred and forty communities from all fifty states, US territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide have participated in National Night Out. And whereas, National Night Out is designed to heighten crime and drug prevention awareness, generate support for and participation in local anti-crime programs. And whereas, the traditional lights on and front porch vigils remain a part of National Night Out. Activities have expanded considerably over the years to include block parties, cookouts, parades, visits from local police and sheriff departments, festivals, neighborhood walks, safety fairs, contests, rallies, and meetings. And whereas, National Night Out is a popular and effective vehicle for heightening awareness, enhancing police-community relations, and volunteer morale. Now therefore, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 5th, 2021, as National Night Out in the City of Duncanville and urge all citizens to join the Duncanville Police Department in being a part of the nation's largest annual crime slash drug prevention event. The benefits to the community will extend well beyond one night. And with that, Chief Levigny?
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations, sir.
Our final proclamation is Recognizing October as National Crime Prevention Month. Proclamation being presented by Councilmember Jeremy Koontz and accepted once again by interim Police Chief Mark Levigny.
Proclamation of the City of Duncanville. Whereas, the vitality of the City of Duncanville depends on how safe we keep our homes, neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and communities. And whereas, crime and fear of crime destroy our trust in others and in civic institutions, threatening the community's health, prosperity, and quality of life. And whereas, citizens of all ages must be made aware of what they can do to prevent themselves and their families, neighbors, and coworkers from being harmed by crime. And whereas, citizens of all ages must be made aware of the dangers of crime and how they can protect themselves from becoming victims. And whereas, the personal injury, financial loss, and community deterioration resulting from crime are intolerable and require investment from the whole community, we must teach citizens how to target hardened, to make themselves, homes, and businesses harder targets to criminal activity. And whereas, crime prevention initiatives must include self-protection and security, they must also go beyond those two things to promote collaborative efforts to make neighborhoods safer for all ages and to develop positive opportunities for young people. And whereas, adults must invest time, resources, and policy support in effective prevention and intervention strategies for youth. And adults must make sure to engage teens in programs to drive crime from their communities. And whereas, effective crime prevention programs succeed because of partnerships with law enforcement, other government agencies, civic groups, schools, faith communities, businesses, and individuals as a help to nurture communal responsibility and instill pride in the community. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Barry L. Gordon of the City of Duncanville, I do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Crime Prevention Month in the City of Duncanville and urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and businesses to invest in the power of prevention and work together to make Duncanville a safer, stronger, and more caring community.
Thank you, Councilmembers, and thanks to all those who have received these proclamations. It is a special time. I wonder why we take time during a city council meeting to devote so much time to these proclamations. It's evidence of the city's and the staff's awareness of our community involvement and what goes on. So this part of our communication to our citizenry is very, very important to us. Moving on to item number three on our agenda, citizens' input. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the Act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations as permitted by law. At this time, there is a two-minute threshold or limitation on comments to be taken from the audience on any topic, and I do have, we have three citizen comments that have been sent in by email that I will read, and I have two cards from members here in the audience that wish to speak as well. And we, there is the opportunity to speak by video conference, City Secretary. Do we have any individuals that want to speak by video conference?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will read the written comments that we have, and I read these verbatim. Hello, I am submitting this comment in reference to the Lad Land Preservation Project. I would like to have my comments read at the city council meeting on September 21st. Thank you very much. As a Duncanville resident for the past twenty-six years, I am sharing my thoughts about the Lad Land. I watched the presentation made to the city council at the last meeting and have no doubt that preserving this land as a green belt slash nature preserve is the best choice for Duncanville. I believe Duncanville has something very special in this land and the Ten Mile Creek that runs through the city. Preservation of the Lad Land will preserve the ecosystem and habitat that is home to so many animal and bird species, not to mention the great benefit its preservation will be for the citizenry of Duncanville and people in surrounding communities that come to Duncanville to enjoy it and the possible development around Duncanville that would come from the preservation of the Lad Land and the green belt presented to the city council. I am excited about the plan and ask for your support in bringing the plan to fruition. I do believe it will put Duncanville on the map for having one of the rare natural spaces around North Texas. As some have said about this land, once natural space is used for development, we cannot get it back. Thank you for seriously considering the opportunities the city has with this green belt plan, which no doubt will benefit nature and the citizens of our city and surrounding areas for decades to come. Submitted by Corina Unal, proud Duncanville resident, no address indicated. The next one is from Patricia Ebert, 115 South Greenstone Lane, 75116. City Secretary Downs, please have the mayor or his designate read my public comments. How much tonnage of recyclables does Republic Services collect monthly in Duncanville? What is the dollar value of the monthly recyclables? We used to get a regular report about recyclable tonnage and dollar savings when Jessica Smith was solid waste management. A regular report of recyclables and also including trash, bulk, and brush pickup needs to be published on the city website. Patricia Ebert, 115 South Greenstone Lane, 75116. The final written input from citizens. This is from Nancy Bell, 938 Nature Drive, Duncanville, Texas, 75116. Mayor Gordon, please read a citizen's comment. I would like to state that I go along with others who want to keep the Lad property a green space for the citizens of Duncanville to enjoy. There are a lot of folks who not only travel the property but also find time to keep the trash out. Do not turn it into more empty buildings. I heard a comment when watching the last meeting that this property was the only valuable property we have left in Duncanville. The property on Duncanville Road, known as the Nance Farm, was extremely valuable, and it was sold, and the City of Duncanville approved the property for a warehouse builder. It is my understanding there is still no actual approved business going in there. I picture it to be a semi-trailer delivery depot causing major damage to the roads and many hazards. I am very unhappy as to the wall that faces Duncanville Road. It is bland and has nice, no nice frontage, and it looks like there is no room for grass or trees. Personally, I would rather see the rundown farm than this building. Are there any plans to open the council meetings for the general public? Thank you, Nancy Bell, 938 Nature Drive, Duncanville, Texas, 75116. City Manager, may I turn to you? Would you choose to make any comments about this last one?
Well, on the first one, the issue on the property at 1270 North Duncanville, there is a economic development company that will be moving, creating about a hundred jobs, and so, we are pleased to know that it is not a vacant warehouse. It is something that we anticipate generating substantial revenue for the city. The last is, the city council meetings are open to the general public, as the public here are aware. We have worked in a hybrid as part of allowing citizens to participate both in-person and online, and so, that has been done.
Thank you very much. The first individual that would like to speak, I have the card, is Erica Browning. As you come to the microphone, please state your name and address.
Thank you, Erica Browning, 442 East Cherry Street. I encourage the City of Duncanville to be at the forefront of protecting our citizens from unconstitutional mandates and have submitted a resolution to Mayor Gordon and Mr. Koontz to that effect. I am requesting that it be presented at the October 19th city council meeting. It is as follows. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Duncanville, Texas, in support of the people's Fourth Amendment rights. Whereas, it is the desire of the City Council of the City of Duncanville, Texas, to declare their support of the Fourth Amendment to the United States Constitution and the Texas Constitution, Article 1, Section 19, protecting citizens' inalienable rights. And whereas, the members of the City Council of the City of Duncanville, Texas, swore an oath to support and defend the Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Texas, and laws of the State of Texas. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Duncanville, Texas, by the authority granted to the city council, by the laws of the State of Texas, that this council will defend citizens' rights and liberties which are guaranteed by the United States and Texas constitutions, that no officer, employee, agent, or representative of the City of Duncanville shall authorize, appropriate, or use government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, or offices for the purpose of enforcing laws that unconstitutionally infringe on the rights of the people to be secure in their persons, to include any laws or orders that mandate, incentivize, or compel vaccination. Please consider that this resolution enacted at the city level is a precautionary measure which would preempt any unlawful mandates from the county, state, or federal government. Our families and local businesses need to know that the City of Duncanville is committed to fulfilling the purpose of all governments, which is to secure our natural rights. Thank you.
Do we have a copy of that somewhere? Do we have a copy of that somewhere?
I will email it to everybody. I only send it to you and Mr. Cook.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Browning. The final card I have is Gail Sliger. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
Gail Sliger, 1405 South Main, Duncanville, Texas, resident of this city for 74 years. My question, when I moved to Duncanville 74 years ago, our disposal of trash was a burning barrel with a screen over the top. We have just spent half of our briefing session on trash, trash pickup, that is. A number of years ago, before we signed a contract with Republic, we had numerous town hall meetings, numerous council meetings, discussing what the citizens would like to have. It was pretty conclusive that we would like to have our trash in bags, we would like to have it picked up twice a week, recycling once a week, and now we are spending untold hours of staff time, council time, citizens' time, to renegotiate this. Obviously, our fees will go up as everything in the country is going up. Costs a lot more to run trucks up and down the road and pay for staff. I would like for us to consider the fact that most of the trash we see on our streets and highways are blowing out of the back of trucks or being thrown out of car windows, and we need to re-educate the public, that they have a obligation to keep our city clean and healthy. We don't need to renegotiate this over and over again. The second thing I would like to say to this council is that I would love to see, as we have in the past, a representative to the North Texas, Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation be a city council member. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our input from our citizens. Moving on to item four, consent agenda. City Secretary, please read the consent items, please.
For A, consider the minutes for the May 18, 2021, and June 21st, 2021, city council regular meeting. For B, consider a resolution approving Judge John B. Rizzo as hearing officer for the health certificate revocation hearings, establishing a term of 12 months and providing for an effective date. For C, consider a resolution approving and accepting the terms and conditions of an agreement with Dallas County on behalf of the Health and Human Services Department for a mosquito ground control program attached heretofore and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, effective October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022, at a rate of $185 per hour. For D, consider a resolution authorizing the third renewal of the interlocal agreement entered into by and between the City of Duncanville, Texas, and Dallas County Hospital District DBA Parkland Health and Hospital System to provide Biotel EMS system services in an amount of $53,657.49. For E, consider a resolution approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Duncanville and Dallas County to provide highway accident investigation services in an amount not to exceed $59,000. For F, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement, the communication system agreement with the City of Dallas for the Public Safety P-25 Radio System project to provide radio infrastructure programming and support, not to exceed $70,000 for the first year.
Thank you, City Secretary. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. McNabburnett. A second, please.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cooks. Please vote. Thank you. The first item for individual consideration is conduct a public hearing. Just a little instruction to council and individuals present. This is the second reading of an item which is required. No, I'm sorry, that's a different item. That's a different one. Got ahead of myself. This is, this is a public hearing, and at the end of the public hearing, we as a council will vote on approving or not this particular item that is before us. So this is not going to be carried out into a second meeting. Counsel, if you understand that, please, thank you. Item 5A, conduct a public hearing and approval of an ordinance, re-adopting and ratifying, republishing, and extending ordinance number 1385 as amended, codified as Chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances, Article 9, curfew hours for minors for a period of three years. Item will be presented by interim police chief Mark Levigny. Once Mr., once Chief Levigny concludes his remarks, we will then have the public hearing, and I will give instructions on the conduct of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, counsel. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss, as is required by state law every three years, the proposition of reratifying our juvenile curfew ordinance. We are a recognized agency, proud to say that, and want to put that out there as well. So the purpose of our ordinance is, or more commonly known as juvenile curfew ordinance, is to be a proactive approach in which to address minors in what we call conduct in need of supervision. Basically, that's conduct, if it weren't for their age, we wouldn't have any issue with, wouldn't have any ability to enforce this ordinance because they would be out of this ordinance by age. So ultimately, the ordinance helps to reduce crime committed by minors. Curfew hours, as is set by the ordinance currently, on Sunday through Thursday is 11:00 PM through 6:00 AM. And then Friday and Saturday, 12:01 AM to 6:00 AM. The definition of a juvenile or minor is any person under the age of 17 years. The following are violations. A minor commits an offense if he or she remains in public place or on the premises of any establishment within the city during the curfew hours. A parent or guardian also commits an offense if he or she permits, or by sufficient control allows, a minor to remain in those places. An owner or operator of such a place also would commit an offense if they allowed a minor that they knew was, should not be in that place because of their age. So some of the penalty, or the penalty is typically a low-level misdemeanor punishable by fine in a city court, municipal court, and our ordinance is for no more than $500. Parents can be held liable for fines assessed for a minor's curfew violation. So there's several options we have when enforcing this ordinance. We can simply give them a warning and say, you know, you need to get home, and hopefully they heed that warning. But we can also take them home or lease them to a parent or a guardian. We could issue a citation, or we could take them into custody and have a parent or guardian come and retrieve them and take them home. So it's, it's not always just a heavy-handed type situation. We try to handle it at, at a level that we think we're going to get compliance, but also getting, you know, that message across. But we have the ability to enforce this, to make that contact at hours when probably all your parents, I know mine did, said, you know, there's nothing good going on at this point in time, so you probably need to be home anyway. Some of the defenses to prosecution, there's a list there. You know, if a minor is working, if they're on an errand for a parent, and there's no detour or stop, if they're traveling with their parent or to and from home, and again, there's, there's a long list there, if they're exercising their First Amendment right protected by the United States Constitution, if they're married, or have been married, or had disabilities of a minor removed in accordance with Chapter 31 of the Family Code. So the history and effect on our curfew ordinance, we began, we were able to track numbers back to 1996. And so those are citations that you see that were issued during a particular year. So as you can see, the last several years, we've issued zero. But again, what this ordinance allows us to do as police officers, if we see somebody out during these, these times, it allows us to approach them and require that they identify themselves if they look like they would fall into this age group. And, you know, we can investigate that a little bit further. Otherwise, we don't really have that ability. And get them to a place that it's safe for them, and, you know, sadly to say, there's some juveniles out there that they don't have the supervision they should have, and they're out there, you know, committing some crime at, at some of these times when, when they're prohibited from being out. So it just gives us a tool to identify those juveniles when they're out. So it looks like the ordinance through the years has really done its job, given us that ability, and we're down to where, you know, it's kind of, it's flat. It's, it's been nothing the last couple of years. But again, it gives us that ability. Some of the other cities that have, still have this ordinance because it does give law enforcement the ability, especially in this time of COVID, when we shouldn't be out there. It's just another reason, just another layer. So the first two, Cedar Hill, DeSoto, they're adjacent to Duncanville, and there's some bigger cities there. I won't bore you with reading through those, but, you know, those are certainly recognizable cities. And at this point, I'll just open it up to any questions anyone has.
Chief, we're going to go to the public hearing, and then any questions from council will be addressed to you subsequent to that. Thank you. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing in accordance with our rules of procedures for the City of Duncanville. We allow 10 minutes for each side of the issue to speak, and that's 10 minutes in the aggregate, so each person does not get 10 minutes. So I will open the public hearing for 10 minutes for individuals who wish to speak in favor. We will then close that portion of the public hearing. I will then open a portion of the public hearing for those individuals who are opposed. There, there will be 10 minutes allotted for that, and then we will close that. Then with each of those closures will require a motion and vote by the city council. Then at that point, once all the public hearing is, are closed, then we will open it up to questions and discussion by council. So we're going to open the public hearing in favor of this resolution that we have before us. The timestamp on that is 8:10. Are there any individuals present who would like to speak in favor of this? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Erica Browning, 442 East Cherry Street. I would like to register my support for extending ordinance 1385 regarding curfew hours for minors. The ordinance seems to address all reasonable defenses for minors to be out during curfew hours, and I believe it will continue to protect children and teens.
Thank you. Any other individuals present who wish to speak in favor? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to, a motion to close this portion of the public hearing in favor? Okay, thank you very much. We'll do that. Any, then we will open this portion of the public hearing to those who are opposed to this resolution. Please come forward. Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to close all portions of the public hearing, both in favor and opposed.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion close.
We have a motion to close by Mr. McNabburnett. A second, please. Mr. Cooks, a second. Counsel, please vote on the closure of the public hearing. As unanimously approved, to close the public hearing. Chief Levigny? Now open it up to any questions or discussion on the part of city council. Mr. Contreras.
I notice in here that the, excuse me, that the, a minor could, could be in their front yard of their home after curfew hours. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be, if they're in a public place, which it could, technically, you could still be out in your front yard, and if you're causing some issue that is a noise issue, but if you're in your front yard, as with this ordinance, it would not be a violation.
Okay. So to follow up on that, so a minor lives in an apartment complex, and I notice that apartment complexes are included here, and they're sitting out on the stairs leading up to their front door. Is that perceived as a curfew violation?
Well, obviously, we would have to take everything into context there. It's, it's a more condensed living space, and so, you know, just with any right that anyone has, it's your right until it, you know, goes on to somebody else's right to have, or infringes on somebody else's right. So it's a more condensed space. We got to take the whole contact into context, and we just got to deal with that as we, we understand it. And it could be a violation depending on where they were, how close they were to someone else's property, or, but that's, that's a little bit more difficult to parse.
So the officer could use their discretion?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Oh, City Secretary, I failed to recognize the closure. I timestamped that at late 12. Thank you. Seeing no further comments by council, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Approved by Mr. Contreras.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNabburnett. Counsel, please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Item 5B, consider an ordinance approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos Cities Steering Committee, Prens ASCSC, and Atmos Energy Corp., Mid-Tex Division, regarding the company's 2021 rate review mechanism filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable in the public interest, approving an attached exhibit establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiree medical benefits, approving an attached exhibit regarding amortization of regulatory liability, requiring the company to reimburse ASCSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause, declaring an effective date, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the ASCSC's legal counsel. Presenting this item, Finance Director Adina Atmore. Ms. Atmore.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to present to you this, for you to consider an ordinance to accept the settlement that was negotiated by the Atmos Cities Steering Committee. That's a committee that's made up of about 170 cities, and what this committee does is that each year that Atmos Energy recommends a rate increase to the citizens because they deliver a gas to various citizens in the city. So each year, they may go before the Railroad Commission in order to recommend a rate increase. So this year, they recommended, recommended a $43 million rate increase for us. So your, your part on the steering committee helps us to hire consultants and negotiate that settlement of what that rate increase would be. And so this year, they negotiated that rate down to, that the amount that's owed to Atmos Energy for revenues. They feel like they, they were owed because of the revenues from the prior, operations from the prior year. They negotiated that from $43 million down to $22 million. And so the part of that, that the cities, the cities in the steering committees have to, are, are responsible for reimbursement is the 16.8 million. So what that is equivalent to is, is basically customers in this, who have gas, will see an increase of about $1.28 per month, which is, is equivalent to about 2.2% each month. They also negotiated where we would see a two-month delay. So where we approve this effective October 1st, it won't be effective until December 1st, the rate increase. And so what they're asking us to, to do tonight is to approve the settlement agreement, which allows for reimbursement of the steering committee's expenses by Atmos and, and all of the negotiation settlements they came about with that, for us to approve it through an ordinance to be effective October 1st. ordinance to be effective October 1st. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Atmore. Any questions, comments from council? Mr. Cooks.
You may have stated this. Who's on that steering committee? You said 179?
170 cities.
Seventy cities.
Yes. I sent a list of all of the cities, you know, our surrounding cities are also a part of that. But there's 170 cities in Texas that are a part of this steering committee. So all of our combined resources go into helping to provide consultants that look at the fees or the rates or the amount that Atmos Energy was proposing that we needed to reimburse them or that the customers need to reimburse them. So they use that, our resources of all these cities in order to look at that, also to be able to negotiate, hire attorneys. And the attorneys that are on this, that work with this committee are out of Austin, and their name of Lloyd Gosling, Rochell, and Townsend.
No, I was really particularly talking about, you said the cities. What, is it a person we're talking about? Is it?
Yeah, usually each city designate a person to serve on that committee.
So who's on committee for Duncanville?
I don't really know at this point. I think that the city manager's in the process of designating somebody for that role.
I think it used to be our finance director.
Okay.
If memory serves.
So we have, so we have, up at 176, we have a person that's, I'm just reinstating what you said.
Yes.
We have a person that's representing Duncanville on that committee.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you very much.
This is a very technical question, city attorney. The item that we're reading in the agenda says, "Consider an ordinance," but what we're approving is a resolution. Is there, is there a disconnect between, or I'm sorry, is it correct that we are considering an ordinance, but we're approving a resolution?
It has it both ways. So sometimes when the staff report comes from Lloyd Gosling, sometimes they say resolution. Sometimes ordinance approve whatever that's in your packet as a resolution.
Okay, so technically, legally, technically, we're okay in terms of the language that we're using here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's see, Mr. Contreras.
I tried to read this.
It is massive data, legally, so.
It is. But given the makeup of this Atmos Steering Committee and your recommendation, I'm going to be good with this.
Well, it saved us over roughly 20, over $20 million that we would, that Atmos Energy would have asked the customers to reimburse them during the year. So we're saving the citizens some dollars, especially those who have gas, so.
Thank you.
I'm just glad we're around the table.
Mr. Harvey.
No, and I was going to piggyback on what was just said. Apparently, there are benefits in having strengthened numbers.
Yes.
Because I imagine the alternative would be that we would take on Atmos by ourselves.
Yes, and that's a very rare thing because usually when Atmos goes before the Railroad Commission, and this is where they file their rates, for the, if you don't have a representation, if there's no consumer rep, the Railroad Commission usually just passes their recommended increase. Okay? So this is very beneficial to all the cities that are involved in this committee.
Okay. Any other comments by council? Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Mr. McNabb. Second by Mr. Cooks. Thank you, council. Please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that was extremely educational, long, boring reading.
I know, I read it.
About 18 pages and new acronyms I had never heard of before, and, you know, grip and room. Mr. Hernandez from Atmos is back there. Shame on you for having to put us through that, but that's okay. We appreciate it, and well done, Ms. Atmore, for that presentation.
I tried to give you the summary.
In assembling the documentation, this is, this is, this is the caliber of work that our staff does in preparing our packets so that it goes on record, it is part of our public documents that our public sees and goes in terms of any legal opposition. This is, this is one of the most detailed and replete pieces of information for such an important thing.
Yes.
And the use of our gas and the fees. So thank you very much for all of you putting that piece together for us.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 5C. Consider an ordinance granting to Atmos Energy Corporation, Texas and Virginia Corporation, its successors and assigns a franchise to construct, maintain, and operate pipelines and equipment in the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas, for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of gas in, out of, and through said city for all purposes, providing for the payment of a fee or charge for the use of the public right of ways, rights of ways, excuse me, and providing that such fee shall be in lieu of other fees and charges, accepting ad valorem taxes, and repealing all previous gas franchise ordinances. Ms. Atmore, the floor is yours again.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council members, this is an agreement of franchise agreement. This is actually the second reading. The last council member, I brought this item before you to recommend approving the Atmos franchise agreement. This agreement gives us, gives Atmos the right and the right and the privilege to maintain their infrastructure and distribute gas throughout the city of Duncanville. And for that privilege, they have agreed to give us 5% of the gross revenues that they make from the customers that have gas. So this agreement is effective March 1st, 2022, and will end in December 1st of 2046. So it is a long-term agreement with Atmos for this. And, and I think someone asked me the last time about, you know, how much is that? And that's approximately to Duncanville, we get about $300,000 a year from gas franchise fees. So that's, that fee comes back to us for their right in order to operate in the city of Duncanville.
Thank you. As Ms. Atmore did state, this is the second reading, which is required by law. So just keep that in mind, council. Mr. Coons, I see you, and have a comment, please?
Yes, sir. Now, I just want to make sure I understand the last meeting. So essentially, we're just approving the 5% payment. I mean, there's, nothing else really is, can change in this, the contract or there.
We're approving agreement, and that agreement was attached in your package of what, of all that they have the right and what we have the right to expect from Atmos Energy in this franchise agreement. There are, there are certain things that we expect from them, and there are certain things they expect for us. But the bottom line is that, you know, for that right, the right-of-way privilege to distribute the gas, we get a 5% of their gross revenues. And so that will come to the city for the next few years until 2046.
Can, is the Atmos representative, is he here?
Yes.
Can we ask him questions right now?
Certainly. Please state your name and title with Atmos for us, for the record, please.
Al Hernandez, Manager, Public Affairs.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. So, so this agreement will start March 2022 and go to December 2046. And my question is about Atmos' schedule of new construction. Is that something that has already been provided to us or that can be provided? So, you know, new projects, new construction, additional pipelines? I mean, is there any kind of plans like that that we can be made aware of?
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, we are working on the Daniel Dale project from Highway 67, I believe that's to Main Street. And that, and of course, we are, that's a pipeline relocation project, and we're in partnership with the city so that the city can get their water lines, or I believe coming from that, from that station there, to replace those lines. So that's a relocation project. But throughout the city, depending on the type of pipe, the age of the pipe, we may come in and do some infrastructure upgrades, have some pipeline replacement projects, you know, to, let's say, for example, you have an area of economic development or development, and you need gas at that location, or you're going to grow that area, meaning more opportunities for gas usage. We may come in and add a different diameter pipe, meaning more pressure. So there's always something, you know, that we can be doing inside the city. But now, say this, we work closely with the city to make sure that there's any projects that we can partner on. Sometimes that does cut costs for the city. Sometimes it's advantageous for both of us to, you know, join together to get a project. But as far as particular growth, I believe Duncanville is landlocked. So unless you buy some additional properties, land, and want to have some development there, you know, what you have now is what you're going to have unless we do some infrastructure upgrades.
Okay, and this is just, thank you for that.
Yeah.
And this is just from my personal education, because a lot of the background I'm just being filled in on. So if in 2035, y'all decided y'all wanted to run a gas pipeline through certain parts of the city, that y'all would be able to do that, and nothing would change as far as our agreement.
And actually, the, the agreement has a, I believe that's 25 years. So, and that, even that timeframe is negotiable. Just, I didn't know if y'all knew that or not, or if that's been talked about. That's negotiable as well. You don't have to go out that far. We have some cities who have brought that down 20. We have some cities that want to negotiate every five years. That's strictly up to the city of Duncanville and what, what you want to do. So, but yeah, so if there are some opportunities to, to get our product to your customers or to our citizens here in Duncanville, absolutely, we're going to be here for you. Thank you.
Mr. Contreras.
And just to be clear on that, on that point, in the contract, you can, from time to time, request, as you are tonight, a rate increase.
Yes, so two totally different items, right? So Atmos Energy, if we're talking specifically the franchise agreement?
Right.
So the franchise agreement allows us to come forward and, and put forth a rate increase based on the amount of, of work that we've done, not just in Duncanville, but in the region, which is what we call our Midtech Division. So it's any and all projects that we have, it's a, it's a return on our investment. It's pretty much what it is.
Sure, hundred. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Contreras.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNabb. Council members, please vote. The item is unanimously approved. Item 5D. Consider a resolution approving Republic Waste Services of Texas Limited, request to the city of Duncanville to increase contract rates on the municipal materials management agreement by 3.6% for residential collection and commercial services effective October 1, 2021. Mr. Ramey.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Again, we're here to talk to you, with you tonight about the solid waste collection. Our rate increase up here with me is Scott Hempel from Republic. Here's some slides right after I present that he will be talking about. So just some background, back in July was when, 2019 is when we entered into a new municipal solid waste collection agreement with Republic. And then again, the initial term is from September of 2019 through September of 2026. And then this agreement, under the current term, would renew in successive five-year periods unless terminated in advance. So within the base contract, it does allow Republic to request a rate increase each year that is tied to the CPI all urban for water, sewer, trash collection services. And this is something that the Department of Labor puts out every, every month. So in August of this year, we received Republic's request for the rate increase going into the FY '22 fiscal year. They're requesting 3.6%, which is based on the June 2021 CPI all urban for water, sewer, trash collection services. Again, those rates will go into effect on 1 October with the start of the fiscal year. Just as a reference, the June CPI all was 5.4% and the June CPI for just garbage and trash collection is 4.1, just to show that this particular index that we've been using was the most, I guess, conservative or favorable to the, to the city. Again, here's the summary of the rates showing the impact. Now, again, something that I want to clarify is that the rate that we're seeing here is only one, one portion of what is paid at, by the residents of the city, the overall solid waste or sanitation fee that is on a utility bill, in addition to paying Republic's collection fee, also pays for the landfill, pays for some staff members, pays for alley CIP. And so what I want to make sure I'm clear to the public, especially, is the rates that we're talking about tonight are not necessarily what will actually be, will be reflected in what a citizen actually sees on their utility bill. What we're talking about tonight is that the Republic rate increase will go to 1914 per month per house, which is a 66 cent increase over FY '21. And, but what I want to highlight is that down at the second bullet is that we are not changing the impact to the residents. So we are maintaining the 2436 curbside service rate and the $30.54 alley service rate that the residents currently see. And again, just to bring in, this is a slide that we previously provided council during a briefing session, and this is something that the staff is monitoring, is a customer service tracker. This is based on the aggregate of what Republic receives at their call center, plus what the city of Duncanville receives at the, at the service center in complaints each month. And what we're, we're looking for on this tracker is a complaint rate of 1% or less, which basically is about 100 complaints. We get concerned when we receive more than 100 complaints in a month, roughly, for our city. And as you see, other than the spike that we had in February, which was tied to Winter Storm Yuri, we've maintained a steady, you know, service tracker rate. At that time, I'll turn it over to Scott to talk for Republic.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. I just wanted to go over a few slides that.
Put the mic a little.
Sure. Scott Hempel, I'm the General Manager of Republic Services in South Alice. And, got it. Just wanted to illustrate some of the residential tons that we're picking up, and we're seeing some trends right now. We're still seeing people staying at home. Our tonages, year over year, through August are up about a half a percent, but we're still up about 6.5% to 2019 pre-pandemic levels. So we're still seeing an increase in the total tons there. Our hours, again, we're seeing a drop in overall hours. However, we have had some contract labor helpers, temporary helpers, that are not reflected in, picked up on our reports. Overall hours, year over year, are down about 11% and about flat to pre-pandemic levels. And again, I don't think it's any secret as far as fuel costs and what we're seeing as far as, from an operating standpoint, about 18% over prior year. So those are some of the key bucket items that we have as far as those increases.
Thank you. Just a comment. I wanted to, not that I didn't accept the information in the packet, I went to the Bureau of Labor Statistics to examine the CPIs and to compare those in terms of, you know, accessible information that's available to the public. And interestingly, looking at the trends from October of 2020 through August of 2021, from August until basically February, March of 2021, our inflation rate in our nation was flat. It basically negligible at 1%, maybe 1.1, 1.2. Regrettably, then, in right after the storm Yuri, inflation began to explode. Regrettably then, in right after the storm Yuri, inflation began to explode. And that's where we are today, at the 5.4% in terms of the CPI that the Bureau of Labor Statistics has validated as of September the 14th of 2021, was the information that I received or that I looked for this afternoon to want to validate for myself this. Because looking at it from a business perspective, any business that is incurring increased inflationary costs across the board, whether it be for fuel, as you've indicated here, fuel has risen dramatically. Labor costs have gone up. Third-party information in terms of coming in, we know that you're short-staffed because we've seen more complaints coming in. And the honest answer is from Republic, we wish we could take care of it. We don't have enough people to man the trucks to get out there and do the job. So what that does in terms of benefit packages, fully loaded costs of personnel costs, and looking at this and saying, okay, is it feasible then that, under the contract, Republic could have come in asking for a 5 or a 5.3 or a 5.4% increase? And the possibility, the answer to that question is, yes, they could have. And then we, as a council, will then have to consider that major increase of 5.4% whereas you're only, 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 I should, I shouldn't forget that, strike that for the record. Yeah, Republic is requesting a 3.6%. I would ask on behalf of the council, positively on the behalf of Republic, to explain, while you could have come in for a 5.4, you're coming in with a 3.6.
At this point, I think we've had some challenges earlier on in the year with service. And I think, you know, Councilman Coates, you brought that up prior. You know, again, honoring the contracting, going across the board with what we're doing on our operating costs, I think we're going to stick to the 3.6 of the CPI.
So will the, with a 3.6 in here, again, from a business perspective, any time inflationary costs are calculated into what we're doing and we decrement the inflationary cost from actual cost of service, is 3.6% going to keep Republic whole going back to the actual inception of the contract financially? Or is 3.6% really going to put something in the red on your operating statement whereas 5.4 would have taken you into the black? Is that a tough, am I explaining that well enough?
That's something right now that we're going through a budget process as we look forward. But again, not knowing what is going to happen with the way the markets are, our biggest expense is fuel and labor right now.
Fuel and labor.
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Cooks.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let's go back just for a second. I think I'll start with you, Greg. I think it was page 56 on your presentation. No, go back one more, I'm sorry. Yeah, here. All right, so you mentioned, all right, so you said the $19.14 is the new proposed year '22. Then you dropped at the bottom. Help me understand. So you're saying that the residents will not receive an increase?
So as I was saying, the 24, we'll just use the single-family duplex curbside as an example. So the $24.36 is what the resident would see on their utility bill from the city. And what that is, consists of, the 2436 includes the $19.14 for Republic. But then it also includes what we pay for the landfill. The delta, we'll say the $5, covers the landfill costs. As you see, the alley CI project fund, CIP project fund, household hazardous waste program that we have with Dallas County, Operation Clean Duncanville, staff litter crew, our sanitation administrative assistant. And so that's how we fund everything. So their rate is going up between us and the, between the city and Republic, but the rate for the citizen that's, you know, we're giving the utility bill and paying that every month will not see an increase this year.
So they won't, so great. I understand that the citizens won't receive it, but really, so you're saying that the, but the city budget general fund will receive it?
Yes, as the budget analyst or budget manager mentioned during the budget process, this particular year, yes, we, this would be coming out of fund balance for this year. And so, yes, we would more than likely be looking at a potential rate increase next year.
So, I mean, it sounds really good, but I still say that we are still, citizens may not be paying it today, but they paid it before if we're still paying it out of the general fund. I think I'm correct when I state that. Well, would you go back for the citizens and explain to them why, in a contract, we talked about Republic can go up every year if they like? Explain that one more time and put it more so where citizens listening in the audience or online can really understand why we come to this point if they can go up on our.
Sure. So I guess I'll just, again, to keep it in, to help the residents understand. So what you'll see, and what you'll typically see in any long-term, multi-year contract, is a language that allows the vendor to increase their rates or gives them an opportunity to increase their rates based on some indices just to capture the variabilities in the market that you would see over a multi-year contract. So I think we all understand that in today's, you know, world, in today's economy, that inflation happens every year. And so indices like what we're talking about here are typical in a long-term service contract. In the particular case of Republic in this contract, the mutually agreed upon index that we would use, again, is the CPI all urban as it pertains to water, sewer, trash collection. So as the mayor referenced in his comments, the CPI is unbelievably spread out into all different portions of the economy, looking at all different things. And so there could be CPI, as I mentioned, you know, some contracts would be, we just look at the all, and that would be 5.4. Sometimes you look at the, just the garbage trash collection in this case, which would have been 4.1. But the agreed on indices that we picked was this particular one, water, sewer, and trash collection services from this particular index. I'm sure there are probably other indices that may be used. I don't know, but that's how we would do it here. But again, most contracts, again, just to summarize, most contracts in long-term service do have some measure, method to capture future costs.
All right, and we'll make this quick too. Average, we talked about 3.6. What was it a year ago and a year before then?
So at our last, the first rate increase that we did under this contract, sir, was 2.9% was the CPI about this time last year. And then last year, what was negotiated was 2.9%, keeping the 2.9% for commercial, but only doing 2% for residential.
Okay, so though we could have went up to 5.4, we still was higher than the, than our two previous years.
Well, again, my understanding is that 3.6, the CPI all urban for this particular category was what we're picked to, 3.6.
Okay. And then Scott, on the landfill, tell me a little bit more about the landfill.
He doesn't control the landfill, sir.
I'm sorry?
He doesn't control.
Control the landfill, okay.
That's a separate contract.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you for answering. All right, thank you, that's my question.
One comment going back to what you were talking about. I think you had a chart in here in terms of fuel costs. Looking at the information I pulled up September 14th from Bureau of Labor Statistics, 12-month rolling average on gasoline alone, inflation is 42.7%. Just on gasoline. And you then, as Mr. Ramey was saying, that you aggregate all of these factors into the CPI, even with that 42.7% increase in fuel. I mean, you have to be careful. They say fuel and fuel oil and gasoline are separate commodities. But that 42.7% just in gasoline shows the demonstrable effect on the 5.4% of CPI in the overall. Just wanted to throw that in there, add that. Let's see, Mr. Contreras, then Mr. Mac Burnett.
Mr. Ramey, help me connect that, the statement you made earlier about how this rate funds a city position. There was a sanitation administration?
Oh, oh, yes, sir. So actually, the sanitation enterprise fund funds several positions within the city. Within Public Works, it funds our sanitation administrative assistant, LaShawn Devon, who manages the contract, checks all the bills, does all the quality assurance in the field, takes care of customer service through when they call the service center. But it also includes the four-man litter crew out of the Parks Department as well and pays for that, that division.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Contreras, thank you for bringing that up too because there's some other things too that I want to point out that Republic does as well in terms of community involvement, like this upcoming Friday and Saturday is PIP days. And this is something that they're throwing in that's a freebie. So it's built into this and it's something to help our residents as well. So I wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koontz.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the explanation and the detail and just clarifying what exactly is going on here because just thinking like the average resident, we just see a rate increase. And just with some of the discussion that's been had, and again, just with your explanation and presentation, you know, we all just need to make sure that whatever's decided, that we try to clearly communicate to residents exactly what the decision is all about and what's behind the proposal that's being made. So, but I do appreciate the presentation and helping me understand some things. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mac Burnett, second by Mr. Vera Cruz. Council, please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you very much for those explanations, as Mr. Koontz said, and for being able to clearly articulate that for us. Appreciate it very much. As I stated at the outset, we are just about to enter into four items that need to be discussed, first of all, in executive session. So at this time, the timestamp is 8:51. Going to recess City Council. And City Council members, if you would please go into our briefing room, and we will then go into executive session. All right, citizens, thank you for your forbearance in staying with us. We are reconvening our City Council meeting. The timestamp is 9:34. We are moving on to item 5E as an echo. Consider a motion to reconsider resolution of appointing a member to the North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation, Perren's NCT HFC, for a term of blank years and determine a Duncanville appointee. This item was requested by Mr. Mac Burnett. I will turn to Mr. Mac Burnett for everyone's understanding and clarification to ask him why he feels this item needs to be reconsidered.
Thank you, Mayor. After more thought, and I've basically changed my mind, and I also think it should be a current council person as well as the term should be somewhat limited. And that's my reason behind it. So Mayor, I'd also like to make the motion to reconsider the resolution of appointing a member to the North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation.
Mr. Mac, there was something you said toward the very end of your explanation, your voice tailed off and I didn't catch, I didn't catch it. I'm sorry.
Okay, I feel like it should be a current council member. I changed my mind. It should, I feel it should be a current council member as well as I don't think the term should be a long term. I think it should be a shorter term so that other future councils can decide who's going to be on this.
That was it, it was about the term. I didn't catch the full explanation of your feeling about the term. Thank you very much.
So again, I'll make the motion to reconsider a resolution of appointing a member to the North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation.
We have a motion, to consider a motion to reconsider a resolution appointing a member to the North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation by Mr. Mac Burnett. Is there a second?
I don't think we need a second, Mayor.
We have.
You need a second on the motion?
Yeah, this is the motion. We need a second for this. We have a second by Mr. Cooks. So City Council, please understand what we're doing is we are voting on whether to reconsider what was done during the last City Council meeting in appointing someone to this corporation board. So please vote on yes, you approve of reconsideration or no, you do not approve of reconsideration. The vote is six to one. Mr. Koontz saying nay, so the vote to reconsider is approved.
Mayor and Council, as a result of your motion on agenda item 5E, then 5F is before the council for consideration.
Cannot hear you, Mr. City Attorney, I cannot hear you.
Did, am I mic on? I said as a result of approving item E, item F is now before the council.
Correct. Moving on to item F, consider a resolution appointing someone as a member to the North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation for a term of years to be considered. I will open this up for discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
If they're, let's see.
What you have is, you have a vacancy, so you need to nominate somebody. And then there's a second component to this for how many years?
So Mr. Koontz, Mr. Contreras, you have a nomination?
Yes.
Okay, please state your nomination.
I'd like to nominate Patrick Harvey for the position on the North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation.
Do you have a recommendation for years on term? Because that's also part of it.
Well, I'd need to ask the attorney about this, if I may. Yes, sir. It would appear that in our original ordinance that was created for this position that we actually installed the six-year limit. Is that accurate? Yes. It's not required by the finance authority. You can make it for less if you wanted to run along with their term of office. That might make some sense.
So do you have a recommendation for?
I think Patrick was elected in May, so that would basically be three-year term.
Well, maybe, you know, I'm going to open this up kind of irregular, but open for discussion since Mr. Mac Burnett mentioned that term of years is also something for consideration. Mr. Mac Burnett, do you have a recommendation for a shorter term?
My recommendation would be for two years.
For two years.
Okay, I would include that in my motion.
Okay, so we have a nomination.
Nomination.
For Mr. Harvey. A nomination for Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
To be a member of the NCT HFC for a term of two years. And I need to ask, Mr. Harvey, would you accept?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Koontz.
I'd like to nominate Jeanette Jamison for the North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation.
Okay.
For the same term length, two years.
Two years. Okay. We have two individuals who have been nominated. Mr. Jamison is not present. So we have a nomination for Mr. Harvey for a term of two years. We have a nomination for Ms. Jamison for a term of two years. As we have two individuals, here's how we're going to do it. And this is not going to be a yea or nay, it's going to be by a greener, red or green? Red or green? So if you want, council members, if you want to vote for Mr. Harvey, you will vote green, yes. If you want to vote for Ms. Jamison, you will vote red. you will vote red, no. Clear? So, this is for accepting the nomination.
So, whoever gets...
In motion.
Whoever gets, if there's four greens or four reds, then they would be elected green, Mr. Harvey, red, Ms. Jameson.
Correct. Okay. All right, council, do I need to go through it one more time, or we're good? Green is Mr. Harvey, red is Ms. Jameson. Okay? So, green would be a yes, red would be a no. Please vote. We have six votes for Mr. Harvey as green. We have one vote for Ms. Jameson by Mr. Coontz. So, the nomination for Mr. Harvey is approved for a two-year term. Congratulations, Mr. Harvey, for another job.
Another free job.
This one doesn't pay either.
Yeah, another free job.
Okay. So, we are under the same rules of procedure for the next item as well as what we've just been through. Item five G is as in golf. Consider a motion to reconsider resolution nominating a candidate for Board of Directors to the Dallas Central Appraisal District, PRINZDCA. Mr. Cooks asked for this to be reconsidered, and it was appropriate in terms of rules of procedure. I would ask Mr. Cooks to please explain why he would like this reconsidered.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I've asked for this item to be placed back on the agenda because the last time we discussed the appointment, I was nominated, and I failed to acknowledge my desire by second of the motion to be considered as the nominee by second of the motion. However, also further finding out that it did not need a second. So, I would like to be, I'd like this to be placed back for a motion to reconsider the DCA candidate.
Okay.
And with that, I'd like to make an approval to do that, a motion to do that, excuse me.
We have a motion to reconsider the resolution for nomination of a candidate to the DCA Board. And remember as well, this is simply to move on. If it's approved, we will move on to item H. If this is not approved, we will stop here at item G. So, any further discussion by City Council members on item G? City Council members, please vote.
Mayor, who needs a second? Who needs a second for a motion to reconsider?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. McNabb. Okay, I'm sorry. It was a motion to approve by Mr. Cooks and a second by Mr. McNabb. The vote is five to two in favor of reconsideration.
Mayor and council, as a result of that, you would have to consider nominating a candidate for the board. To point out, this is just to nominate someone to appear on the ballot that would be submitted to the actual council to vote on at a later date. This is just to appear on the ballot that goes to all the cities. It's not the actual election of the board member itself.
So, on item H, consider a resolution to nominate a candidate for the DCA Board.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
You can nominate.
I'd like to nominate, make a nomination.
Make a nomination, sir.
And I'll start by saying, if I can, make a statement before, that given some statements that were made during our council meeting and statements that were made here tonight, I believe that each of us should seriously consider, when we have an opportunity, to place one of our members or the mayor on any board, transportation committees, DCA, any board to represent the city of Duncanville. When the opportunity is there, I think we should give it serious consideration. These individuals will more than likely be giving us updates and reports that will be beneficial to us. And so, for that reason, on this particular item, I'm nominating Mark Cooks for the position.
Okay. We have Mr. Cooks being nominated. Are there any other nominations or discussion? I would like to make a comment before we proceed, just as an understanding that Mr. Hurt has performed admirably as our representative to DCA for several years. There is no quantifiable evidence that would indicate that Mr. Hurt does not do an admirable and acceptable and capable job of representing the city of Duncanville on the DCA Board. If there were some quantifiable evidence that would be presented, I would be more understanding of why he should not be on that board for us. Mr. Contreras, your comments have merit. I do understand that. But at the same time, I am looking at how Mr. Hurt has performed for us as a city. He has done well. We have had no complaints over several years in terms of his service for this city on that board. So, I have, as I said, if there was something that presented in evidence to say that he is not capable of performing for this city and doing so admirably, then I could certainly understand not having him, having Mr. Cooks in his place. But as I said, I do understand your concern, and it has great merit, it's compelling merit, that an individual serving on the board for DCA would be a member of this council. Now, it is also, by DCA rules, it does not need to be an elected official that serves on that board.
Sure.
You know, and reading all the provisions and parameters of what DCA does require. So, it need not be an elected official. So, it could be someone else from our city that could do just as well, or Mr. Hurt as well, to continue to perform for us. So, are there any other comments or any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Michael Hurt for the DCA Board.
Okay.
And I'd also like to point out, we do have a citizen in Duncanville who's already on that board, Cassandra Phillips. She's on the DISD Board, but we aren't completely unrepresented on that board.
Okay. So, Mr. Coontz has nominated Mr. Hurt as well. So, we have, at this point, we have two nominations, Mr. Cooks and Mr. Hurt. Any other nominations or discussion? Okay. So, we will use the same procedure as we did prior to this one. If you are voting in favor of Mr. Cooks, you will vote yes, which will equal green. If you vote in favor of Mr. Hurt, you will vote no, which will be red. So, councilmembers, please vote. We have four votes in favor of Mr. Hurt, three votes in favor of Mr. Cooks. Mr. Hurt is renominated to serve as representative on DCA. Thank you very much, council. Moving on to item I, there is no necessary action to be taken as a result of executive session. Moving on to item number six, receive the Economic Development Department quarterly report, and subsequent to that, we will then go to the briefing session item that we didn't get covered in terms of the carry law, right? If I understand, if I recall, yes, Firearms Carry Act. Okay. Mr. Garcia. Before Mr. Garcia starts, I would like to make public something that I sent to him in an email today. Mr. Garcia was an invited guest speaker this morning at the Rotary Duncanville... What's it called? Rotary Club of Duncanville is the formerly. And Mr. Garcia did a superb job in terms of the presentation of the data, the assembly of data, his eloquence, his articulation, his response to the questions, which were not easy questions. They did a, you know, members of Rotary really pummeled him with some very serious questions in terms of economic development. And Mr. Garcia performed superbly. And I want to thank you on behalf of myself and to let council know that we have in our ranks a ultimate consummate professional as an economic development director, Mr. Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, city manager, Augustine Garcia, I go by Gus, Economic Development. Today, we'll be presenting the quarterly report along with my associate, Clay Menzel, our Economic Development Manager.
Manager.
Manager. Yes, Mayor. So, some of this will be familiar to you. There's an update, and it was sort of layered, what we've done, the last quarterly update. We're going to follow up on some of that, and then we're also going to include some new developments that I'm sure you'll want to aware of. The last economic development quarterly update, we were new, and so I promised that we would have some updates at this particular presentation. So, I'm not sure how much time I have. I know it's late in the hour, so I'll try to make it as quick as possible and painless as possible. So, we're going to start with a table of contents. So, the top ten employers, what that means for diversification, the top ten sales tax companies, the state of real estate, sales tax performance, department activity, which is going to be new, new development and current projects, which we'll be discussing. Now, I do know that the city manager has asked us to do an update in a more intimate setting, or maybe sort of an executive setting, so we can discuss some of the details on some of the projects and executive session items we've been discussing with the board. So, we can disclose some of those things with you at a later date. But we'll discuss in, we'll briefly discuss some of those as well. We'll talk about community engagement and a treat tonight, which my associate, Mr. Menzel, will be discussing with you, is our strategic plan. The top ten employers hasn't changed much. You're probably familiar with this list. It's more or less the same list as before. There is one new employer, as we mentioned, that will be coming online, which we'll be excited to announce at a later date. The top ten taxpayers are pretty much the same. We have their, the Ford lumber at number four. I will let you know that will be dropping off at some point in time. Right now, it takes a annual period, so a twelve-month period. So, as it ramps off, that will be coming off the list. But that's important to identify. In our last discussion, we talked about the state of real estate. Now, the state of real estate, we get those numbers, and they don't change from year or from month to month, or even from quarter to quarter. They pretty much stay the same. But we do track them to see if there's any anomalies, or if anything changes that we'd want to report to the board. These are the trends we continue to monitor. If you'll notice up in the very far left-hand corner, if you can see it, population at that time was forty thousand seven hundred thirty-nine. I know the mayor had mentioned that it was forty thousand seven oh six. So, this particular analysis had it a little bit higher, but excited to say we did reach the forty thousand mark, or we crossed it. So, I don't know if that's our Rubicon or not, but we did cross it. So, that's exciting news for the public. But one thing we did track was hospitality. I think that's a special concern to this council. As you know, we do fund certain projects with hot tax funds. And so, this is, as you can see from prior quarters, we had the average daily rent and then occupancy. You can see with the red line on the graphs in the middle that we're still continuing to trend upward, which is good news. So, in the last quarter, you can see beyond the red line that we'll continue to trend upward. If you see the twelve-month ADR was at eighty-three dollars. It was at seventy-three dollars in the last report. So, we're starting to trend. Hopefully, we'll get up to that ninety-two dollar rate, which will be exciting for sales tax collection, hot tax collection for the community. So, that's just an update for you there. As far as sales taxes performance is concerned, you can see the area marked in what looks like light brown on the screen. You can see in the month of July, we had a ten point five seven percent increase. Now, keep in mind, this is two months in arrears. So, for the month of August, which would actually be June, we had a ten point seven two increase. For the months of September, which would have been July, is a thirty point seven four percent increase. What we find interesting about this particular graph is that going forward amongst our colleagues and professionals in the industry on economic development and sales tax, we're not sure how we need to be estimating some of these things, because we don't know what impact COVID is going to have. You know, just from a estimating standpoint, in economic development, we look at some of the things that could contribute to the significant increase. Some people seem to feel that it is the stimulus checks that were occurring throughout the United States and how that money was spent. So, it's hard to determine what that impact would have on our total spending. But right now, if you look at two thousand and twenty and two thousand twenty-one, it's a significant increase, about a one point one million dollar increase from the prior year. Now, to give you some context on that, if you took forty thousand residents and you multiplied times three thousand dollars each in an annual stimulus, and then we take about twenty percent of our population is above the threshold on where they would receive a stimulus check, and then you divide that by the amount of money, let's just call it fifty percent, of what they would actually spend of that stimulus, it would be about a one million dollar total impact to what they could actually spend. And that's assuming they spent everything in the city of Duncanville. So, we think that even if that was the case, we would still have a significant increase in total sales tax. Now, I know I just, I breezed through that pretty quickly, but just in trying to determine what impact the stimulus check would have on us, we still feel confident that eleven point four million, even if that were to decrease by the numbers I just mentioned, we'd still have a net positive impact on total sales tax. And that's assuming they spent all of that money on sales. And we still know that approximately fifty percent of our total, our total potential is being leaked into other communities like Cedar Hill and Grand Prairie as far as sales tax, sales tax potential. We know that we approximately have about a one billion dollar sales tax potential annually as far as sales are concerned, and we generate about half a billion annually here in the city of Duncanville. So, we think that even then, if we took the full amount and all of it was spent here, we still wouldn't have as big an impact as we think. So, we think these are, in our opinion, good numbers. This is just sales tax year over year. You can see that in two thousand twenty-one, it was eleven point four six four in sales tax collections. In two thousand twenty, it was ten point three. In two thousand nineteen, which is probably more indicative of where we would be, it's ten point six. So, we're still trending upward from that year. Industry segments, this is something that came up in the last presentation. You can see telecom is still there. It's sort of trending downward. But for the month of August and September, you're still seeing significant increases in the sales tax, which basically mirrors what we just went over on the sales tax side. As far as all others, I'm presenting again the segments that you see here, based on NAICS codes and SIC codes. You can see, we're still trending upward, and we're still seeing an increase in total sales tax collection, which is positive. One thing I do want to show you that's new, this is a new slide, I took out the top ten, and then I included the top one hundred. So, what you're looking at is the top ninety. I know it's small, but we had to keep things confidential. We didn't want to put the actual sales tax members. But what we're showing you here is that we have a significant amount of diversity in the city. So, what you're seeing is your current year and your prior year, and you're seeing that even if we were to have a downturn in one of our major sales tax collectors, we still have a significant number of businesses that are collecting sales tax in Duncanville. So, what that basically tells you is that our diversification is good. And if one of our large employers were to decrease in sales tax, we still would be in pretty good shape, because we have a significant diversification of sales tax collectors and businesses within the community. That information is available for, to be seen in camera, to use a legal term, but we couldn't disperse that to the community, because that's confidential information. So, new developments, one of the things that we did since we've been here to talk about some of the activity that the economic development team has been engaging is, we did attend Retail Live as part of the runway to what we call a strategic plan. We've been assessing information. We've been visiting with local businesses. But Retail Live is a statewide conference where multiple businesses, retail businesses, different businesses, whether it be lifestyle centers or open-air centers, just different stores in general that are sales tax collectors and generators for the city. I know there's a significant push to have more stores and restaurants in our community. Retail Live is where these companies assemble in the form of booths, as well as real estate developers across the state of Texas. Many from the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex attend this event. There was approximately two hundred booths at that event, and we got an opportunity to visit with multiple developers from the area. So, this is kind of an area where they all congregate, and we can be efficient and talk to multiple people. Myself and the economic development manager attended, and we kind of just split up and visited with multiple developers and retail businesses and restaurants that would be potential tenants for many of the businesses and shopping centers we have here in Duncanville. So, we gathered information as we attempt to have our runway for eventual launch on the strategy that we're going to be talking about. We talked to national retail stores, as well as regional developers and national developers, to see what the perceptions were for the city of Duncanville. So, we gathered some of that information, which we'll be presenting to you at a later date. Legislative affairs, although October first is when our department officially becomes legislative. Legislative affairs, although October 1st is when our department officially becomes legislative advocacy for the city, we did take sort of an advanced trip as part of Retail Live. We visited Austin in the legislative Capitol, although Cindy had already occurred, which the second legislative session had finished. The gavel had been struck. We did get an opportunity to take some advanced interaction with staff, even though it was a skeleton crew at the time. We just introduced ourselves and let them know, allowed them to realize that we would be contacting them at a later date as far as, I believe, House District 111, House District 109 and some of their staff members to start talking to them about legislative agendas, what things we would want. We visited with the Governor's Economic Development Office, which we will be visiting again. We have meetings with them, as well as state agencies for Texas Workforce Commission. So we'll be addressing that also. Happy to report that the Economic Development Corporation has started their social media accounts, as we discussed in the briefing and work session during the budget session. Some of these things we discussed and what we wanted to do for our marketing plan, that will be in the strategic plan, which I'll talk about in a minute. But we now have social media accounts, which we just launched this week. So you're going to start seeing some of those things occur. As you're aware, the council did approve as part of our budget, marketing. So we're going to be addressing that and showing you exactly how we're going to be spending that money or utilizing those resources for our social media accounts. We're obviously working on the current website with our PIO officer. And then we have some base hit projects. I did mention earlier, I alluded to the fact that we would be having a more intimate discussion, maybe an executive or in a work session, where we can discuss some of the projects, what we call base hit projects. We currently have 10 of them that we are currently working on for potential incentives for the organization. I've listed them here as Project Greenstone, Project Yellowstone, Project Traffic, Project Mobile, Project Wisdom, Project Sweet, Project Cardinal, Project Automatic, Project Canopy, and Project Park. Those are the names currently that we've assigned to these projects. We have visited with multiple businesses in the community to get their assessment of the community, their desires and wants, and what incentives we can possibly provide for them and what their needs are. We have been working on fieldhouse development phases. As you know, we've worked with Parks and Rec on a constant basis. There's a Phase 1, there's a Phase 2 that we're currently finishing on the project, and we're looking at possibly Phase 3, as well as potential partners with the fieldhouse and any new developments that could take place, whether it be additional restaurants and retail or whether it be new events for the project, which will come at a later date, and we'll assign project names for those as well. We did work on the budget and it was approved. We talked about the food truck ordinance and working with planning and zoning, which you heard today. Some of those discussions occurred with economic development and what we can do as part of the food truck initiative for the city. As part of, as you recall, in the work session, it was part of our budget goal to include a food truck park within the city. We do have potential developers with food trucks that we're in discussions with, so we'll be discussing that as well. I will say that we are now fully staffed. As of two weeks ago, I take that back. As of Monday, we did hire our final employee as part of our, our staff, and we intend to produce a excellent or high standard of work product for this council. And you're going to see some of that in the coming months as we launch our strategic plan.
Can I stop in there? I want to stop just for a second. Just on this page before you go further. Base hit projects, when you talk about the Greenstone, Yellowstone, so those names, let's just, let's just say the old Alexander, I think is what you called it before. So would they, would they be given one of these names, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. In fact, one of those names is in here, on the I-20 Alexander project.
Okay, so what will be?
These are project names that go to executive session, so we can discuss them.
Okay.
And so each project is assigned a project name, so we can discuss it without revealing for competitive purposes in case we're competing with other entities. As an example, if we were looking at, let's just use Smokey D's as an example, right? As a barbecue restaurant or QSR, we would give it a name and not disclose who we were talking to because we don't want anybody else attempting to poach that business from the city of Dunkinville. So we get, it's confidential in nature, and so we give it a pseudonym for the project. And so for the I-20 Alexander property, we would have a project name for not only developer, but the project or the QSR, the quick-service restaurant or, you know, the restaurant or sit-down restaurant, whatever it might be, so that we don't divulge who we're talking to, so they can't be taken away from us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, click.
So as far as fully staffed, as you're aware, as part of the budget process, there was some development services restructuring. We are now, or will be, at October 1st, the Development Services Department, which will entail economic development, planning and zoning, and legislative advocacy. We did a development tour of the city with the Best Southwest Leadership Class. So we visited and we showed many of the leaders or people that were in the class, some of the assets Dunkinville has to offer. So we had regional board meetings. We worked with Leadership Southwest Conference on a comprehensive plan for the region, along with our Best Southwest Partners. We, we attended virtual seminars with NCT EDD, which is the North Central Texas Economic Development District. As you are probably aware, every five years, there is a new comprehensive economic development plan that's submitted to EDA for dollars and cents that will be distributed for, across the region for different projects. As part of our legislative advocacy efforts, we'll certainly be trying to capture some of those dollars. So we're just getting to know those people, those folks, so that we can be in the discussions with those monies. We also attended the North Texas Commercial Association of Realtors. Obviously, this is part of networking and getting to know the needs and wants of real estate agents and developers in the region. We plan to have that as part of our budget, as part of our budget discussions and some of our marketing plan. We talked about real estate roundtables, developer roundtables. This is just part of those efforts. We presented a small area plan and an overlay district discussion and special, special district planning for the council, as you recall. We did provide hotel occupancy, occupancy tax grants for ALW, which was the football game, the community theater, Lions Club in Gasso. These are not new. These are just part of what we do every annually, provided the board approves. We have now three new board members for the Economic Development Corporation that were appointed, as you know. We'll be updating them and orienting them. This will be the first work session this coming Monday. Forty new certificates of occupancy were issued in the last quarter. And we are now working on American Rescue Funds for Dunkinville Small Businesses, as well as potential dollars for revitalization, redevelopment of areas affected within the city. And possibly, we're looking at the opportunity to utilize monies for our downtown district, assuming they were affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. So we're still working on that, but that's something we're exploring to see if we can possibly get monies for that as well. And with that, I'm going to invite my associate, Mr. Clay Menzel, to talk to you about the strategic plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So just to go over this real fast, I'm sure the first question you guys probably have is, why do we need a strategic plan for the EDC? We obviously all have different conversations together here in public, private conversations, side comments, all the types of stuff about what we should do in Dunkinville from a development standpoint. Our constituents obviously have feedback. We as staff had our own views as well. And so first and foremost, this is a written document of all of our different ideas and, and conversations boiled down into an actionable plan. So this is intended to be a holistic document designed to be our mechanism for long-term strategic growth and planning for our city. That should hopefully outlast all of us and the next staff, however many down, you know, years down the road, they can pick this up and run with it. And so, again, like I mentioned, it's to really just bring us all together. Redevelopment of a city like Dunkinville, 92% built out, kind of like we mentioned earlier, like with Retail Live and the Developer Conference. You know, it's very sort of difficult. When they don't hear greenfield, they like greenfield development. They don't want to hear necessarily redevelopment as additional time, money that they have to invest. And so sometimes those conversations stop as soon as they begin when they don't hear that we have a lot of land, particularly like warehouse spaces, lots of acreage. And so we really need a document that brings together all of these different factors so that we have, you know, that require extensive forethought and planning. And so this provides us a framework to instruct us, guide us, but also get us consensus. So between us as staff, the elected officials, the city council, and also our board, we can all get on the same page about this. And so this is just also a way for us to better communicate with our other departments in the city, Public Works and our other departments, to really just get everybody on the same page. And so our strategic plan, which we will bring to you after we've had a chance to show it to our EDC board, we were kind of hoping, I'm sure, for October 5th originally, but because of the national night out, we will probably get it to you a little sooner than the 17th in one way or another. But really, the three core components of the strategic plan is a economic development portion. This is focused on external business activities, business retention expansion, small-scale base hits, like we were mentioning earlier, catalyst projects that are a little more cluster-related, and then legacy projects, which are the big, the big fish you reel in, right? Community enhancement is more internal, beautification of our city, making sure that our departments work a little better. I think Councilman Coontz, at our last meeting, either the last meeting or the meeting before that, there was a gas station that needed repaving. And Councilman Coontz asked the question, was the EDC involved in this? And the answer was no. We have incentives to help small businesses repave their lots. And so how do we work better with our fellow departments to make sure that? And we've actually already done that. I've reached out to them and said, hey, if you come across this type of thing, if you could just give them our number, tell us to email them, call us. And they said, we'll do, sounds good. So again, just making sure that internally, we're working better as staff to make sure that, you know, we can help our businesses where we can. And marketing, of course, it's the external perception, making sure that people know us. You know, just making sure that we're out there, we're seen, part of legislative affairs as well. We have a, a meeting set up actually this week, Thursday, to meet with the Governor's Economic Development Department. So again, just, you know, a graduate of Dunkinville ISD, right? So just making sure we're outreaching to as many state and regional stakeholders as well to put us on the map and that we are open for business.
Mr. Harvey had a question?
Yes, sir.
Just real quickly, it might be a good idea for the Community Services Department to have ongoing interaction with neighborhood services. Here's the reason that I say that, because a lot of times in doing what they do, they have an opportunity to see conditions at businesses in which you all could possibly help, like you just mentioned, that gas station. And so I can, I can see more opportunities like that. And hopefully you all will communicate and collaborate on a regular basis to address those issues as they occur.
So just real quick, that's exactly the reason for this. So just to let you know, since that meeting that occurred here on the DAS, we're here in the council meeting, we have been in discussions with that particular developer. And one of our base hit projects, or if you will, one of our projects has been identified. It's part of what we'll be discussing with the council at a later date, but that's why we're implementing that as well.
Absolutely. Our street-level bureaucrats are some of the best people to identify problems that we can assist with. So where are we at with the strategic plan? Currently, we do have a completed rough draft ready. A final draft will be ready for public presentation at the DC EDC Board Meeting on Monday. And after that, we're going to get our, our board members' feedback from that, incorporate that. And then once we have staff who made our final changes, the DC, DC EDC Board's been able to give their feedback and we've incorporated their changes, we will be bringing it to you guys for additional feedback. That way, we can incorporate any comments, questions, anything that concerns you might have, incorporate that. And then we should have a final, ready-to-go document that we've all kind of had consensus on to execute it in the new fiscal year.
Mr. Contreras had a question?
Yes, sir.
Top of mind marketing plan, what is that?
Yes, sir. To kind of go back to the previous quarterly report, Director Garcia brought before you guys a top-of-mind marketing plan that had a couple of different marketing initiatives to market our city. And so we were able to take that and incorporate that into the strategic plan, along with our other initiatives.
So yeah, let me just make a comment on that. So top of mind is something that's used, I guess, in the marketing industry. Whenever someone thinks of development in the Best Southwest Region, we want to be the first community that a developer will think about when they're thinking about, where do I develop in the Best Southwest Region? So we want to be the top of their mind when they're thinking about those potential projects. So from a top-of-mind marketing program, it's what it's called. We want to be top of mind for any developer looking at this region for economic development or development of industry or jobs or anything that that would entail.
You know, I'm sorry. You know, thinking about what you're saying on that, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Menzel, that it brings to mind when you say "top of mind" and knowing what you're going to be doing with social media is search engine optimization, SEO.
That's part of it, yes, sir.
So I would think that as top of mind works into the marketing plan, that search engine optimization is married up together with those things in terms of anybody looking at our internet, anybody doing an internet search, search engine optimization is, it's a cost. I do not know of any service that actually does it well that is free. And I know that there are costs involved with SEO. So not asking a question, just putting something, putting something on the table that as you look at the top of my marketing plan and is SEO is going to be pursued, is there, you know, what cost is going to be incurred? And is EDC or in general fund and how that's going to come apart in terms of paying for that SEO? Because there's cheap SEOs and then there's good ones, the ones that really, really work.
That's correct. So, you know, one of the things-
I would hope that we would look at the first-class SEOs to get the biggest, the better, the best bang for our buck, not just a good bang.
Sure. As part of the website redesign, as part of our marketing concepts or our marketing strategy, we're going to be focused on certain industries, certain developers. So we have, that's part of what we're going to be discussing with you as far as our marketing plan. If you recall, we budgeted $100,000 for our marketing strategy and what we're going to be doing. That would entail an asset video. We currently don't have one, which we'll be discussing some of the assets we have in our community, restaurants, places to go. But the other thing I want to mention is that we're also including metrics in the, performance metrics in the strategic plan that will determine whether or not we are successful at what we are setting out to do on an annual basis, which we will bring back to council to just, to basically report to you, how are we performing? How are we doing after we approve the final strategic plan? So you'll see that as well in the presentation.
Mr. Coontz.
Thanks for the update. It looks like we got a lot of good stuff brewing, so I appreciate all the hard work y'all are doing. Could, could you go back? So this is just the strategic plan here. Was there another slide for the strategic plan? Is this the first slide here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I was just trying to look through there, so I didn't see any mention of the comprehensive plan in all of this. And I just wanted to know how, how that, how this works with the comprehensive plan and just making sure that we're not going in too many different directions at once.
Absolutely. That's a conversation we've had many times. We don't want to produce just another document that's going to collect dust and that's not going to contribute to the overall development. That's definitely a cognizant thought of ours. This is definitely a companion to the comprehensive plan where that is more planning-related. This is more economic development-related. So they should actually complement each other quite well and then in tandem.
Yeah, so it's a great point, and I'm glad you asked that question. So as you know, as Mr. Menzel mentioned, the comprehensive plan specifically deals with what are the districts, what are the opportunity areas within the city, and what are the planning and zoning restrictions associated with that? And how are they being used and what is the future outlook or the future plan, if you will? So the strategic plan is going to be a plan that basically dictates how, a roadmap or dictates how we as an organization are going to work within those parameters of the comprehensive plan. So everything about the strategic plan falls in line with what the comprehensive plan calls for, if you will. So this is just, like he said, a complement to the comprehensive plan. So we wouldn't deviate from the comprehensive plan. We would actually follow the comprehensive plan in a more, I guess, detailed way. What this does is it lets you know what we're doing, what our goals are, what we're trying to accomplish. We have a community enhancement plan that talks a little bit about that, but it doesn't give us the action, the plan, or the roadmap. From this strategic plan, you're going to see what we're working on, how we're working on it, what our- what our strategy is, and what our metrics for success are in achieving those goals. So this is, there's a, there's a saying, as you know, those that plan to fail, and those that fail to plan. So this is what we're doing for you. So it's an actionable plan strategically designed that's going to address catalyst projects, community engagement, many of the things that we've been discussing. But we're not, we're not just keeping it out there. We're actually putting it in black and white, in a format that can give you the ability to judge us on whether or not we're performing. And on top of that, as Mr. Manziel mentioned, if something were to happen to him, or something were to happen to me, you know what direction we're going, and we're going to show you the metrics so that the city doesn't, doesn't fail, if you will. So that's what we're trying to accomplish here. And so ultimately, it complements the comprehensive plan.
Great. Mr. Contreras.
So I had one other, one other question. So I was, I was looking at the, the, what am I looking at here? The weekly update from the city manager. And I was just looking at certificate of occupancies that were received. And I see there's a studio seats, there's a styles and cuts, a hair salon, barber shop, another certificate of occupancy, a beauty salon on Camp Wisdom, another one that was given, a beauty salon, hair eyelash extensions, there's a cell phone accessory store, another hair salon that's being issued. And so my question is, what are we doing to, to diversify the businesses that we have?
Sure, it's a great question. So as part of the strategic plan, that was our runway to launch, which is, our launch has been this month in October. As you recall, we talked about the budget, the marketing plan, the food trucks, the different projects we want to attract, we want to attract restaurants, we want to attract employers. Part of that strategic plan will also have workforce seminars, roundtable meetings. We had to get an idea of what the developers want, what the businesses want, what the council wants, what our board wants, what the community wants as a whole. And so we've been gathering all of that information, and what the perceptions are from the developer community. What are they saying about Duncanville? What is it that we are doing wrong, and what are we doing right? Are we open for business? Does the community at large, does developers look at us as a potential development area? Those are the things that we were looking at, or sort of our runway for launch. And so we had to gather that information. So it's real easy to say, let's go after, you know, this, or let's go after that, and let's stop going after what we're getting. But in order, before we do that, we have to gather information and make an assessment on what's going to actually work for this community. Sometimes I call them buckets, or the criteria. Part of Retail Live, in our visit, was gathering some of that information from developers. Like, we gathered some information that many developers think we're South Dallas. They don't realize the demographics of our community and why we are what I call a well waiting to be tapped. So we have to gather that information and know what they're thinking. So one of the things in our strategic plan that we're calling the Golden Plate Initiative. Now, we're going to discuss that a little bit more in detail when we visit with you and we go over the strategic plan, that'll discuss exactly what you're talking about, so that we can diversify and go after some of those things that the council, that the board, and that the community, and as the community, the community and the business community at large has been asking for. So those items will be discussed in detail with you. And how we're trying to accomplish it, and a metric for how we're going, how we're going to do it, and be competitive with our sister communities, so that they're not poaching some of those businesses away from us, and that we're being competitive. And we're going to let you know what they're offering, and what we can offer as incentives, as well as redevelopment in our community, and how we're going to address those things also.
I want to offer perspective on this, Mr. Koontz, in terms of when you look at the itemization and say, okay, there's a bunch of beauty salons, and there's a bunch of hair cutters, and so on, and so on, and so on, and the services issue. The perspective I want to put into this picture is that those are new small-business entrepreneurs. And while we don't want too many new hair salons, and too many new nail salons, and too many this, and too many that, if we discourage small-business entrepreneurs from coming into our city, these are, these are incubator-type businesses. I imagine if we were to, if you were to talk to some of these people, you know, how many years have you been in business? A lot of these people say, oh, this is my first shot, or this is my second shot. And I like to do it in Duncanville because it's a nice, small community, and what Duncanville fits is my demographic that they want to serve. So yes, we have to be considerate of having too many of X number or Y number of types of businesses, but at the same time, counter that with an understanding that we welcome these new entrepreneurs to our city, and we want them here. Now, whether they survive or not is not up to us. It's how well they do their business and how they attract patronage and clientele, that's their business. But for us to say, we've had enough hair salons, and we're not going to prove any more COs for hair salons, that's a negative. Because these people can succeed, and they have the desire and the will to succeed. We should do everything we can to encourage them. I just want to add that perspective to it. Mr. Benavides, you may, yeah, Mr. Contreras had a comment as well, so.
Well, I'll be brief, I'm sorry. To that point, I was on the receiving end of a lot of those COs for many years. And I'll tell you, on those, probably more than 50% failure rate. And it's not because of their enthusiasm. A lot of times, it's because of lack of preparedness in coming into business. We used to have, in conjunction with the chamber, an incubator where we had some retired financial people that would, we'd actually send some of these people over when we sensed they didn't really have the funds to start a business. And after they went over and were educated on what it took to start a business from the business, because somebody tells you, you make really good barbecue in your backyard, you may really make really good barbecue, but it doesn't mean you're going to be successful.
Grandma makes great tacos.
That's right. So, so I'd like to actually see something like that come back, where we had a resource to let some of these people talk to, so they do have a better chance for success. But the fact is, is that most of them, if you really watch those, and watch them in six months or eight months, you'll see that a good percentage of those have closed down. It's unfortunate. They invest a lot of heart and money into it, but they don't always work out.
Statistically, across the United States, entrepreneurs, 50% of entrepreneurs fail in the first year and a half to two years. Doesn't matter what they're doing.
Well, that's-
Regardless of what service they're providing, whatever they're retailing, however they do it. Historically, throughout the United States, 50% of businesses fail within the first two years. And it's a lot of, I didn't well, I didn't know this well enough. But, you know, to your point, Mr. Contreras, Service Corps of Retired Executives, SCORE, still exists out there. And I think, you know, this is something, too, that we can create an alliance with Service Corps of Retired Executives, and really help this, and create a greater bond between these new entrepreneurs, so that their success rate can maybe exceed what's historically found.
I had several that actually returned after we'd go over and talk. They'd come back and say, I'm not ready to start a business. And it was good that they didn't lose their, their money so that they could better use it, instead of just having a failing business. It was doomed to failure from the beginning, it would seem.
I just wanted to add to it. When you see a CEO also, you may have a business, as they mentioned, that was in the same spot. So any change of use, if someone moves out, if it's a hair salon, the new person comes in, they have to obtain a CEO. So you may see the same names, but some of these are in the same sites that already had a salon or a nail, those types of businesses. So every time someone moves out and someone new moves in, through my Public Works and Fire Department, we approve a CEO. And so it's really about the address and what's been the initial use in that address there.
Yeah, Mr. Koontz, you had more comment, please?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to say, you know, I just, I'm just looking at the last weekly report. That's why I talked about the hair, hair salons and nail salons. Even though I don't look like I use any of that stuff, you know, I have nothing against those particular kinds of businesses. But it's just a question that I get a lot.
Did I respond, did I answer your question about diversification?
No, you did, yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. And it's just a, you know, a question I get a lot from residents is, you know, how, how can we get, you know, more diverse businesses? And is, is the city making efforts to do that? And your response sounds like we are, and, and so, yeah.
And so to give you an idea, we, we're addressing your issue with SCORE. We're addressing your issue with training and education. We're also addressing the BRNE, and talking to some of these businesses, why they fail. Just to give you one of the metrics is, as an example, we're planning on visiting with 750 businesses over the next five years. That would be a metric, as an example, in the strategic plan. Just to give you one of the things, right? So we're going to break that over a year's time. How many businesses we're going to visit with? We're going to document it as part of the software that we obviously are asking for, to talk about what the results were, what are they struggling with, as part of our BRNE program, which is short for Business Retention and Expansion, to discuss some of the concerns that some of these businesses have and what they go through. So we'll be presenting those things to this board to show you what exactly our businesses are struggling with and what we can do. And you'll see that sort of filter through the Economic Development Corporation, as well as to this council for final approval, once we have that information. But again, the strategic plan is our roadmap and our guide, following the comprehensive plan, as well as the ability to judge or grade us on how good of a performance, assuming you agree with the strategic plan, and you have anything you want to add to it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We are moving on to an item that was in our briefing session that we did not have an opportunity to get to, and that is the Firearms Carry Act. And Assistant City Manager, Robert Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss this item. The Firearms Carry Act of 2021, also known as House Bill 1927, went into effect on September the 1st of this year. Under the new law, Texans no longer have to have a state-issued license to carry a handgun. And so the city manager and I felt that it was very important that our city attorney brief you, because this new law is going to impact how weapons are brought into open meetings. And so Mr. Hager will provide the additional information on this new law.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as stated by Assistant City Manager Brown, the act changed, and now we have unlicensed carry and concealed unlicensed carry. And so as a result of that, there are provisions in 1927 to talk about the Open Meetings Act. And so that's our concern with you here, since the act is applicable to meetings of the city council and the carrying of that handgun. Prior, on August 31st of 2021, the law was, and we've had signs up for some time under 3.06 and 3.07, if you have or were carrying a handgun into a open meeting, it was, and the signs were posted in accordance with the law, you could be asked to leave, you could be cited, you could be arrested, you could be disarmed. And that was true if you're unlicensed or licensed. As a result of House Bill 1927, that objection has been removed out of the law. Whether it was intended to be removed out of the law, reasonable minds may differ. But now, someone that has a concealed handgun license can carry that concealed handgun, if it's in a holster, shoulder holster, or a hip holster, into an open meeting in the city council. And so the signs under 3.06 and 3.07 are obsolete, and you will not see those. We will, and have recommended, a sign for you under Section 46 of the Penal Code, which makes a person who is unlicensed may not carry a handgun into the open meeting. If anybody carries a handgun and they are licensed at the request of our security and our police department, or any licensed police officer, they have to display their license to carry a handgun, and another form of identification with them to show that they're the person who holds that license. And only then would they be allowed to remain. If they had, did not have on their person their handgun license or another form of acceptable identification, they would be asked to leave. If they were, if they refused to leave, they would, I would assume, be disarmed and maybe escorted out and arrested. So what has changed for us is people that have a concealed handgun license, and they have to wear the gun, as indicated in the law. It has to be in a holster, or a hip holster, or shoulder holster, when they come in. Our police officers have the right to ask anybody in the room at any time, if they feel that there is cause to do so, whether that person is carrying a handgun. I, and what we need probably is a feeling from you of what level of security are you comfortable with going forward? For example, I went to the Dallas Court, Commissioner's Court, again today. It's twice in a month. I hope never repeat that. But they have actual security. So if you go into the open meeting, you have to go through a metal detector, you engage with a member of the sheriff's office, and they make an assessment, and may or may not ask you whether you have a handgun. Now, I was in a company with one of the staff members for one of the commissioners, and so I got treated maybe a little bit differently than a member of the general public, since I had signed up to speak at Commissioner's Court today, and had done so at the request of one of the commissioners. So, but we do have a metal detector. On court days, this room is used for court proceedings, and the law has not changed with regard to having a handgun during a court proceeding. You may not have a handgun, even if you're licensed in a court proceeding. So the days that we use this facility for municipal court, then there'll be other signs posted that would preclude handguns from being in the building. So, and that's only areas that are open to the public. So staff may want to reconfigure how open a building is, or how accessible the building is, now that handguns may be brought into those facilities. Open meetings more restrictive than just the building itself. We have an open area for building permits, you have an open area for court and water bills, you have a secured area for the manager and secretarial and finance suite. You have to have card entry. And it's been like that, at least since the pandemic. I don't know if during eight to five hours, that door's open. But if there are restricted areas, then the restricted areas, handguns are not permitted. It can still be not permitted. That's for employee safety purposes. But places of public access, those handguns are now, it's legal to carry them, and it's not an impediment to have them in the building with handguns. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if Mr. Brown has any more, or even Chief Levigny has. And we, we wrestled with this from, for almost a month, trying to figure out what the law is. First TML said, no, we could restrict it. I read the act a little different. We took a more restrictive until we got it figured out, better, I guess, one way of saying it. But after studying it, actually, David Berman and I put this act up, and the old act, on a split screen on television, and started striking out, reading the new law. And so what was left is what we read. And so it seemed, I think the consensus among all my colleagues in TML is licensed carry handgun is appropriate or illegal in, in open meeting.
So you made a comment in terms of what, you're looking for input from us, and quite frankly, I don't think we're equipped to give that.
You know, this is something that it's your, it's your meeting. I don't know that it's, it's not appropriate for us. You may want to consult with the city manager, you may want to consult with-
Well, you didn't let me finish. What I was going to say is that I don't think we as, the six, the seven of us don't have the equipment, the intelligence, the articulation to understand how we think we want to be protected. Mr. McNabbernet is giving me body language to the contrary. However, what I see, and maybe council would like to question as well, is to turn this particular matter over to our city attorney in concert with our law enforcement, law enforcement, and Assistant City Manager, and City Manager, and say, what is the most prudent form of security we can provide to ourselves during the daily operation of business, even with the card-carrying system that we have on that part of the building, in terms of how secure do you all think that this building needs to be? And, you know, it goes even to the field house, and it goes to the rec center, it goes to the senior center.
It's every building we own.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. So to me, this is a very-
Those are operational things that I would leave with the manager. I think you're correct. But this meeting, what I was really addressing is, how do you want us to conduct this meeting, knowing that handguns, because that's the optics of that, and this is your province. This is your meeting, it's council meeting. So that's what I was looking for, is far the rest of the building, we'll make recommendations to the manager's office, what her and her staff are comfortable with, because that's a workplace safety issue.
Well, and I would say the strictest security possible for workplace safety. And whatever equipment is necessary in order to provide that security, we need to have it. Not budgeted for, because we didn't anticipate this kind of a thing coming out of the 87th legislature, in terms of how it would affect the Open Meeting Act. I mean, everybody knew what was going on with, with open carry. That was widely publicized.
I think a lot of people thought that when they voted for this, they voted for it, and that handguns would not be allowed.
Yeah.
In open meetings and.
Because, yeah, we, reasonable people would say, no, you really can't do that. You can go to Walmart with your handgun, you know, on your shoulder holster. But, you know, you're not coming into a city hall, but now you can. So unless there's something to the contrary, I'm hoping that y'all come up with a plan that says, we are going to secure city council and this building to the greatest degree possible. Yeah. Mr. McNabbernet.
Thank you. And, uh, city attorney, uh, police chief, Assistant City Manager Brown, I, I know we're talking handgun, but it doesn't address rifles. And, and so rifles are fully acceptable.
They've always been, nothing changed with, with rifles. But at least I can tell someone's coming with a rifle. They're not coming here to, they're coming to use it, I would think. I don't know. If I walk in city hall with a rifle, I think, you know, something's going down. That's just me. I'm silly. You know, there, there was a lot of protesting going on, people with, you know, at the Michigan Legislature, and so there's been a lot of issues with handguns in legislative bodies, and this is another legislative body with.
And while it's out of our bailiwick, it's also affected school educational campuses.
Yes, sir.
Which is even more dangerous. Yeah. Mr. Contreras, this is how you line. Yes, please.
Well, I was just going to say, um, obviously, other cities are having to deal with this issue, too. So, uh, have you been in contact with, uh, any other law enforcement in other cities and, uh, how they're being used as a resource for councils to make decisions?
Yes, sir. Uh, first of all, essentially, what we wanted to do was just make the council aware of how this new law will impact open meetings. Secondly, uh, the police chief and I have been in, uh, conversations, and we are looking at all of our options and how we can better protect, uh, our governing body. And so we also wanted to hear from you. How do you feel? Um, do you feel comfortable the way we operate now? Would you like to see increased security by adding additional police officers? Would you like to see the metal detector? We, we wanted to get your input.
Well, I would agree, not with how the mayor said it, but I would agree with what he said in terms of, y'all are the experts. And if you can, uh, give us some guidelines, um, that's what I, if you were asking me up here what I would want, I would be saying, well, you tell us. Um, we're not in a position to really make the wisest and best decisions in cases like this, but we want to be protected and protect the staff and the public.
You got enough?
Yes, sir. I, I believe we do. Mark, would you like to add anything?
Just real briefly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Koontz, you had a line on. Yes.
No, I was just going to add, I completely agree. I, so first of all, I, when I saw it on the agenda, uh, what, what I thought this was going to be about is completely different from what, what, what you just presented and what we're talking about. So I, this is kind of completely out of the blue for me. So, uh, like has already been said, I, I, uh, I'm in no position whatsoever to, to, to say what I think might be better or worse. And I defer to your judgment on that, for sure.
Certainly. And I, I think we appreciate that, appreciate from where everyone's coming. Uh, I think in, in speaking with the Assistant City Manager about this and with the city attorney, because I did have a chance to, uh, be on a, a meeting with the DA's office and several law enforcement, uh, officials throughout the Dallas County. Uh, and, and we were talking about this. And at that time, so this law, the way they've written it, it traverses many different laws. Goes from the Penal Code to, to all over the place. And, and that's part of the issue with this. I think what this meeting was set for was not necessarily to find out what y'all want to do, but to entertain any questions you guys have about, um, this law, so that maybe we can address them, uh, tonight as best we could, or, you know, take them away with us and, and, and go to, how does it affect this setting? Because it does affect open meetings, courtrooms, uh, recreation centers. It affects them, but it all, affects them all differently. And so whatever you do at one place, it may be a temporary, temporary setup for that place. And then, if something gets to court that we have to deal with, um, we don't even know at this point how that's going to be dealt with in that setting, because there's a lot of ambiguity, uh, in this law as it is.
What about employees?
What about our employees? And that's a pretty broad question.
Well, in terms of can an employee who has an LTC come into work with a holstered firearm?
They could, but she, but the city manager can restrict that. So they.
That's why I'm asking the question. There, there are, there is flexibility, as I read the law, that certain things can be imposed locally, as in terms of safety practices for, for employees and buildings.
But for instance, Mr. Hager spoke about the metal detectors at the county courtroom, uh, or the open meetings. And, and that the licensed folks with handguns can get in even to the open meetings today. Well, it would behoove us to know who they are. Uh, we're all about upholding the Constitution. I took that oath. Um, and, but for everybody's safety, it would behoove us to know who is armed. Uh, so that may be something that we consider. So we've got some ideas. I think this was just set up to entertain any questions, uh, this body may have, that we make it take away, entertain, uh, anything y'all want to ask about what's presented to, or the issue at hand in front of us. Not, not a recommendation on what y'all would do.
No, absolutely. I understand. And that's why I asked, this is a question. What is going to be considered in terms of our employees coming to work every day? Even, they could be permitted, or they could be not be permitted, based on what is put into effect locally?
Well, the new, the new law.
And then the city attorney has to look at that. Is it constitutional for the city manager to preclude and override what's going on out of the 87th legislature with this particular bill?
There, there's provision for employee safety, employee, the employer or the executive, in this case, um, Ms. Farrell Benavides, can adopt a regulation that says no handguns on premise in the building during work.
Well, to that point, um, let's consider the council. I mean, do we want council members to walk in with concealed weapons? Do he as a body have the right to say, to vote and say, no, we don't, we don't want our, even though they're, they're allowed to by this law, correct?
Right. You don't have a local option. If it's an open meeting of a governing body right now, handguns are permitted to be brought into the meeting constitutionally and legally protected for a person that has a handgun license and another form of identification.
Wow.
Yeah. So, Mr. McNabbernet.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. City Attorney, because I'm looking at here, these are, we have a majority of workers. They're working. So if she puts something through, would that be restrictive?
Well, for them, because they're employees, and she's got the right to tell them what they can do, what they can't do. Well, they're at work, and I assume when they're here, they're at work. So.
And if I had an LTC as a council member, not an employee, I could come in with, with my weapon holstered, and you can't stop me.
Correct. She doesn't control only employees. She didn't control y'all.
That's right.
You have to carry, you have to carry it in conformance with the law. And the law is, it has to be holstered or in a proper shoulder holster or belt holster.
It's a perfect conundrum.
On your person, and you have to have a license. So even if you're the mayor and you, you have one, and you don't have your license, you got to take it out, because you don't have a license.
Mayor and Council, why don't you allow the city manager, myself, and the police chief to put something together, bring it back to you, and you guys take a look at it. And what we'll do is, we'll put something that, together that we feel is in the best interest of our city, and that's going to protect everyone.
All right. I guess what you said, Mr. Hager, is that immediately 30.06 and 30.07 come down.
Yes.
Even while we're considering what to do, 06 and 07 are now ineffective.
Yeah, because we're going to probably have some gun advocate come in and challenge you. And, uh, one, I don't need the publicity, and we don't need a confrontation. So I've recommended to all the cities that I represent that they take, take those signs down, and we'll put up a 46035 sign, which is the new one, uh, about bringing.
Yeah, something has to move on that fast.
An unlicensed person. It's basically criminal trespass.
Okay. I think we're done.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Um, council, thank you very much for not hitting any more lights. I don't see anything else lit up here. So we are going to adjourn at 10:51. Thank you very much.